Tomorrow and start at 4:00 AM tomorrow.
You're watching Fox 35 News Plus streaming on Fox Local.
Well, good morning to you and welcome into Fox 35 News Plus. I'm Garrett Weimer and thanks for joining us on this Tuesday morning live on Fox Local and on YouTube. We've got a busy day ahead over the next four hours. We appreciate you joining us here today and we want to begin by talking about Election Day. It is Election Day across the country today. Several high-profile races in other states that we will be watching today, the New Jersey Governor's Race, Virginia Governor's Race, the New York City Mayor's Race. In fact, in just a little bit, we will talk about some of what that means, the implications of that race and what it could mean for us even here in Florida. But it is also Election Day here in Florida, a number of local races that in a number of cities across the state, including in Orlando where we are watching several commission races. And joining us live now outside one of the voting precincts in the city of Orlando, Fox 35's Amanda Ruiz, who joins us live this morning. And Amanda, how has the turnout been where you are so far?
Good morning, officials. We're not expecting the most, especially with an election like this. They believe that less and less people come to vote in election. That's not really the general one. But what we're seeing is good news. We're seeing a lot of people come through, a lot more than we expected. And for here in the city of Orlando, there are three commissioner seats up for grabs and the voters are the ones to pick who goes in those seats. So let's break down what we have so far. First up, Orlando City Commission, District One. Commissioner Jim Gray is facing three challengers, Manny Acosta, Sunshine Grund, and Tom King. Next up is District Three. There are five candidates hoping to fill that open seat. There's Samuel Chambers, Roger Chapin, Chris Tarant, Kimberly Kiss, and Mira Tanna. And in District Five, Commissioner Shan Rose is facing two challengers, Luana Gelzer and former Commissioner Regina Hill. For background, Hill was first elected back in 2014. She was reelected in 2017 and again in 2021. The governor then suspended Hill for her District Five seat after she was arrested on fraud and elderly exploitation charges involving a 96-year-old woman. There was a status hearing on October 24th, but those documents are sealed. The next status hearing for Hill is in January of 2026, and Hill says her ongoing case will not impact the residents she will serve.
Nothing to do with District Five. I've always continued to work for the people, stand for the people, and deal with the people regardless of what was going on with Regina Hill.
Now, Hill has denied wrongdoing and maintains she will be cleared. Her opponent, Shan Rose, says she just wants to serve the community.
Today, as your next District Five City Commissioner, I have the vision to champion the needs of this community, to be able to come up with real-life solutions for real-life problems that this district is facing.
The Orange County Supervisor of Elections says she can't predict how many people will vote in this election, but they do expect 10% of voters to come out today. She hopes to be proven wrong because it's elections like this one that really impact people's everyday life.
Orlando City Council is on the ballot today. They make decisions about transportation, about development, about homeless services, about your water rates and trash pickup. So those are all very important. They affect your daily life. So do your research before you get out there and make sure you get out today and vote.
And again, I've been at two locations so far this morning, and it's been a pretty good turnout so far. Again, if you haven't voted just yet, remember you have until 7:00 PM to go to your designated polling location. Reporting in Orlando, Amanda Ruiz, Fox 35 News.
All right, Amanda, we appreciate you joining us. I know, you know, you talk about the importance of these races, these local races, you know, the Governor's Race, other larger races a lot of times get a lot of attention, more so than these local races. But as you kind of showed us there, they do certainly impact our everyday life. So very important races and encourage folks in those districts to go ahead and get out and vote. Amanda, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
We are also going to hear a little bit more from the Supervisor of Elections coming up in just a little bit. And as I said, we are monitoring some of these other races that are getting a lot of attention as well in other parts of the country, including in New York City. That is certainly a big one there. Let me just see if I can pull this up for you here. A three-way race between Zoran Mamdani, the Democratic candidate for New York City Mayor, Andrew Cuomo, the former governor and now independent candidate running in that race, and then Curtis Lee, the Republican candidate. So we will be watching that closely and hope to, well, we will hear in just a little bit from at least two of those candidates. So we'll be watching that closely. We are also going to talk a little bit about some of the implications of what that race means for us here in Florida. But right now, we're going to take a quick break here on Fox 35 News Plus. We'll be right back.
You're watching Fox 35 News Plus streaming on Fox Local.
Welcome back into Fox 35 News Plus. Want to give you this live look in Tampa where we are awaiting a news conference. I am really sorry about this. Bad timing to bring that shot up here. But we are standing by for a news conference with the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office after a child was killed this morning. That child's mother and another child also in the hospital after the three of them were hit by a car this morning in Tampa. It happened at the intersection of Moore Road and Sheldon Road. We're expecting an update on this case from the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office any minute now. You can see this scene is set, this staging area here in Hillsborough County. This happened a little bit before 8:00 this morning. The woman and her two children were found suffering from injuries when investigators arrived at the scene of what had been called out as a vehicle versus pedestrian crash. Six-year-old child died from her injuries. The mother and other child taken to the hospital with non-life-threatening injuries. So it looks like we are getting microphone checks here right now. We do expect this news conference to begin shortly. We don't really know anything about what happened here, hoping to get some answers shortly from Hillsborough County Under Sheriff Thomas St. John. So again, this is out of Hillsborough County, so over in the Bay Area, but we are watching this closely just because it's certainly concerning to hear about this and a sad story there out of Hillsborough County. We expect an update on this any minute now. We are also continuing to track the repairs and the work involved that is going toward fixing and resolving a bridge collapse outside of a neighborhood in Eustis. That's in Lake County, and a number of neighbors had been evacuated from their homes. Officials yesterday, the fire chief in a news conference that we took live for you here on Fox Local, talked about some of what they are doing and hoping that they wouldn't have to expand that evacuation. Well, there was a meeting last night where neighbors had the chance to meet with the homeowners' Association, some other officials as well, to see where things stand with this because about 20 families still are displaced right now outside of their homes, not able to get back to their homes as the work continues. And Fox 35's Marley Capper has more.
Well, there's no update yet for the 50 residents who are displaced. We don't know when they'll be able to get back into their homes. We do know the HOA has hired an engineer to try to come up with a plan. I'll step out so you guys can kind of see what it looks like now. The bridge is still closed off, and you can see a few cats out here and of course, some equipment. We're hoping that things will get fixed soon. Five days ago, this bridge partially collapsed. A large culvert or drainage system was heavily damaged in the October 26th storm impacting the bridge. Now, as the bridge began to collapse, a water main was shut off. The Spring Ridge Estates HOA hired a construction crew to try to slow down the water from completely compromising, but the bridge damage so far is already costing around $20,000, and an engineer is just starting to analyze the damage to figure out what it'll actually take to fix it. The Eustis Fire Chief says he's distributing letters to homeowners that they can show their insurance companies to justify coverage. The HOA says it has insurance and they're hoping it'll help pay for the repairs. If not, the city says that they will provide a loan to the community if it comes to that. In the meantime, 20 families have been displaced. We do know 11 of them are staying at a hotel thanks to a nonprofit, but that money is going to run out. They are supposed to be staying there through Friday. Beyond that, we're not quite sure yet. We're hoping that there's a solution for the families and of course, for fixing this bridge. For now, reporting in Eustis, Marley Capper, Fox 35 News.
Fox 35 Storm Team Meteorologist Brooks Garner joins me now. And Brooks, just another beautiful day.
Oh, a stunner. Absolutely. It was a little cold this morning. I think a lot of the lizards were stunned, but it's going to be a beautiful afternoon. You know, I was weed whacking the other day, Garrett, and I got really close to like a tree frog in the grass, and he hopped away in slow motion. I thought I had hit him, but I just, I was weed whacking so early in the morning. It was so cold, he was stunned, so he couldn't go as quickly as normal. Like one of those big old Cuban tree frogs.
That is one of the interesting things that you kind of see, how it impacts.
Right, the wildlife.
Yeah, it is interesting.
Well, we're not quite in the falling Iguana Territory, but next week, we've got a blast of cold air that could prove trying, at least for our Caribbean souls, if you're a big fan of this Florida weather. Speaking of, check out this beautiful shot from the Evermore Resort. Ah, yes, an hour-by-hour in central Florida here in the Orlando area from whence we broadcast. We'll go from 78 at 1 to 88 at 2, and then cool it down as we head toward this evening with a sunset shortly before 5:45 with temperatures in the mid-60s by dinnertime. And a dark dinnertime it will be. Oh my goodness, went out yesterday for a late-night grocery run, Garrett, at about 6:30 in the evening, and it was headlights on. Headlights on, I thought, what happened to that sunshine? This is the Florida sunshine we were promised, and no, didn't happen.
Nope, only until, you know, 5:00-ish.
Yeah, it's, and then it gets dark. Oh, well. So we're going to enjoy the sunrise, the sunrise, the sunshine right now at Daytona Beach. That's a shot of a 69-degree Daytona Beach where the tide is out, but let me tell you, this week is the week for the king tides. The highest tides of the year happened this week, and in fact, Thursday morning will feature the highest tide of the year, November 6th. That's in conjunction with the full beaver moon, which is the full moon of November. It's in what's called its perigee, when it's closest to the Earth in its orbit. It's also a supermoon, so it's bigger and brighter than it normally would be, so it's closer. It has more gravitational pull, and so the tides are more dramatic. And when they come in, they'll be high, really high tomorrow, especially Thursday and into the day Friday, and that will result in the water at times of high tide lapping all the way up to the seawalls. And if there's any swell or any kind of an onshore wind, which there may be, coastal erosion is a possibility. So in some parts of the country, king tides mean flooding, like in Charleston, South Carolina, and in Miami. It's also called blue sky flooding. No storms around, but there's still rising waters and a coastal plain that has a coastal, it's called a, well, it's an underground, I'll spare you the scientific term, but it has to do with the bath of geometry of the seafloor, that is, the continental shelf and how the water comes on up. But anyway, yeah, that's a rabbit hole that we don't need to go down. So let's talk about the weather today. Sunny and 80, that's easier, Garrett, to talk about. 70 and 80, sunshine and 80, 80 in Bushnell, 78 in Ocala. We're just looking at some really nice weather here with 70s and 80s. And we're going to soak it in because as we head into the weekend, we'll be into the mid-80s before some big changes come our way with a cold front moving in from the north. But this isn't any cold front. This is going to represent for Florida at least, a one-day winter blast next week, where we're going to have high temperatures barely getting out of the 60s for most of us. And I know you might scoff saying 60s and that's not winter, but for us it is because, you know, our typical highs are around 80 this time of year. So we're going to see that front swinging through on Monday, dramatically dropping temperatures to some 20 to 30 degrees below normal. And that means that we'll only see highs on Tuesday in the 50s in the Panhandle of Florida and in the 60s and maybe low 60s around Orlando. We'll have to see how this goes, but this is going to be a shock to the system. And if that's not enough, there's going to be a wind chill factor early next week. So we've gone beyond talking about the beautiful midweek. We're enjoying the beautiful weekend ahead. We're just going to be in the 80s. Next week, we've got a couple of days where it's going to be bone-chilling cold for about 200 million Americans, most of us east of the Mississippi. And that means it's going to feel like it's in the single digits in teens from the windy city to Gary, Indiana, to Cleveland, Ohio, and up into Vermont and Albany, New York. It'll feel like it's in the 20s, the wind chill factor in Atlanta, in Nashville. The actual low will be around freezing in Atlanta, so the first freeze for a lot of the south. As far as Florida goes, we may even see frost in Tallahassee on Tuesday morning. And for Orlando, it's going to be in the 40s, and with the wind blowing, it's going to feel like it's in the 30s and 40s. So that's a shock, right? I mean, what do you say?
I mean, that's, that is cold, cold.
That's cold, cold. That's like real cold. And if you want colder yet, go north. There's snow on the way. Yeah, this will also be the season's first measurable snow for our friends in Buffalo. I think locals call it Buffalo, right? I'm kidding, it's Buffalo. But when your lips are frozen, maybe you call it Buffalo because you can't get the "uh" out. Or maybe you'll be saying, oh, this is too cold. Three to five inches of snow in the Lee of the Lakes with that lake effect snow, and we may see upwards of a foot to a foot and a half in the White Mountains of New Hampshire, or as locals say, New Hampshire. In the Alleghast Territory of Maine, man, it's not going to be in Providence, Boston, New York, Philly. It'll be rain there, but they'll get a little bit of maybe slushy accumulation in the suburbs west of the cities above 700 feet sea level. So there'd be like central Massachusetts, eastern Poconos of Pennsylvania. Anyway, let's get back to our local forecast. It's, this is the time here, Garrett, we gawk. We gawk at the horribleness of the cold, but people, a lot of people there love it. Let's be fair. They look forward to the season change and they'll enjoy it. We get more of the same. But this, this more of the same is going to be beautiful. It's going to be low 80s next couple of days and mid-80s this weekend. But yes, it will get cold on day eight of the seven-day forecast, which is next Tuesday with highs only reaching the 60s after lows in the 40s. But we'll bounce back to the 80s before the week is out.
Yeah, don't let those, don't let those 80s that we're looking at fool you there. We will, we'll see that show up on that seven-day forecast tomorrow, I guess, what's, what's coming after that, so.
For the record, people in Buffalo, don't call it Buffalo. I was totally kidding.
Okay, good to know. I'm glad you cleared that up.
Spare the angry emails.
Fox 35 Storm Team Meteorologist Brooks Garner, we appreciate you joining us.
You got it. My pleasure. Thanks, Garrett.
We're going to take a break here on Fox 35 News Plus, but we will be right back after this.
They notified Hillsborough County Fire Rescue that there's a possible trauma alert due to the nature of the injuries.
Welcome back into Fox 35 News Plus. Want to get you straight to this news conference going on live right now in Hillsborough County. The under sheriff there giving details about a mother and her two kids hit by a car while walking those kids to school. We know a six-year-old child has died. Let's go ahead and listen in.
Segundo Osario died at the scene. Our driver was a 77-year-old male. He was driving a green Dodge pickup truck. He also was transported by county fire to St. Joseph for further medical evaluation. The driver will be cited today for a violation of right-of-way involving a death. That citation does have a $1,000 fine as well as an automatic six-month suspension of his license. You know, on behalf of Sheriff Cronister, I would be remiss if I didn't mention tragedies like these today can be avoided because we continue to encourage our drivers to be safe. Put down your phones, stop texting, pay attention to the roads in front of you, especially at these busier times of the day, both rush hour in the morning and the afternoon, in areas where there are families crossing crosswalks, walking their childrens to school. It's so important that we could quite simply avoid these tragedies if we just paid attention. Any questions? No, it doesn't appear to be. Investigation is still too preliminary. Approximately a mile down Sheldon Road, just north of Moore Road. No, ma'am, it's not a crossing, it's not a school crossing zone. I'm not exactly sure. It appears they're probably halfway. They did, absolutely. And that's just it. It's, it's a terrible tragedy that this family is going to have to live with forever. And, you know, our hearts go out to the family because it's unimaginable, right? We're parents. We all have children. We have sisters, we have brothers, and the loss of one of our own is just unspeakable. To further answer your question, yes, they were properly in the crosswalk. They had the signal to cross the road. The driver did have a green light, but as drivers, it's important and it's imperative on us to pay attention. The pedestrians always have the right-of-way. End of story. They both suffered broken bones, multiple injuries, but they are going to be okay. No, sir, speed was not a factor. Yes, ma'am, he was traveling what would be eastbound on Moore Road, entering to go southbound onto Sheldon Road. So he was making a right-hand turn, southbound on Sheldon Road at the light. Well, he was transported to St. Joseph's for further medical care. Thank you.
Under Sheriff Tommy St. John in Hillsborough County, giving a tragic update on that crash out of Hillsborough County where a mother walking her kids to school, you heard him say, they were in the crosswalk, they had the signal. A driver ended up hitting all three of them. A six-year-old died at the scene. The mother and the other child have broken bones, multiple injuries. That driver has been cited for failure to yield, according to investigators there. So just a tragic, tragic thing that happened there this morning. And, and just a reminder, as we also heard from the under sheriff, that when you are a driver, when you're out on the roads, just you have to keep your eyes peeled, you have to be aware of pedestrians in crosswalks, on sidewalks, and in the area, because they do, as he said, they had the right-of-way, even though that driver did have a green light, that the pedestrians were doing what they were supposed to. They had the walk signal and were probably in the middle of that crosswalk when they were hit. We're going to take a break here on Fox 35 News Plus, but we'll be right back.
You're watching Fox 35 News Plus streaming on Fox Local.
Welcome back into Fox 35 News Plus. And here is a live look at downtown Orlando on this Tuesday morning, live on Fox Local and on YouTube. We appreciate you joining us here today. It is Election Day. A number of local races that we are keeping an eye on, including in the city of Orlando, the District One, Three, and Five seats on the Board of County Commissioners, excuse me, the City Commission, I should say, not Orange County. We're talking the City of Orlando Commission, Districts One, Three, and Five. We did hear just a little bit ago from hear just a little bit ago from the Orange County Supervisor of Elections, Karen Castor-Dental, who spoke about turnout. She talked about what we're seeing and the preparations that led into today, how folks can be confident that the elections are secure. This was Supervisor of Elections Karen Castor-Dental a little bit ago.
All right. Good morning, everyone. I'm Karen Castor-Dental. I'm the Supervisor of Elections for Orange County, and we are out here today at the Northwest Neighborhood Center, which is in District 5 because there's an election today in Orlando. A lot of times municipal races have a low turnout because there's not as much attention. So we want to make sure that everyone knows that today is Election Day in Orlando, but it's not just for the whole city. It's only for Districts 1, 3, and 5. And right now, we're in a polling place in District 5. We welcome everyone to come out and vote if you're in one of those districts. You do need to go to your assigned polling place today. If you have a vote-by-mail ballot still, you can drop it off at our office on Kayleigh Street, or you can bring it to your assigned polling place and exchange it for a regular ballot. But it's very important that you get out and vote for these local races because this is where so much of what our daily lives, how they're affected by these local races. So we have, your Orlando City Council is on the ballot today. They make decisions about transportation, about development, about homeless services, about your water rates and trash pickup. So those are all very important. They affect your daily life. So do your research before you get out there and make sure you get out today and vote. The polls are open from 7 till 7.
What are we looking at, do you think, as far as turnout is concerned?
I can't predict the turnout, but it sometimes is around only 10% of the eligible voters will turn out at a municipal election. So that just means that every person's vote will have a big, bigger impact than on a presidential race. Our early voting was steady, but we had about a little over 1,000 people who came out to the supervisor's office to vote.
You know, District 5 has been pretty contentious. A lot of focus has been on that race. Has there been any allegations of wrongdoing from either side? Because we saw one candidate posting something about her signs were vandalized, or anyone has reached out to your office in that regard?
Well, as far as the elections and the candidates, we have had no, it has had no bearing on our office. We are just meeting with the voters and they're casting votes, and we will count the votes and then determine who the winner is. But as far as any of the goings-on outside of our office, we don't really pay much attention to it.
There's this election going on today, but then a lot of people are looking forward to the midterms as well. And I mean, there've been changes in election laws and so forth. What do people need to know to make sure that they are able to cast ballots in the midterms?
Well, register to vote. And I know that our office has been sending out address confirmation mailers. Make sure that that information is accurate and that we keep your address up to date. That's important. If you are getting a new driver's license, or they've been issuing new numbers. So when you go to the tax collector's office here in Orange County and they ask you to update your information on your voter registration, just say yes, even if your address or name hasn't changed, because we do need to update your new driver's license number. So all those things will get you ready for the gubernatorial election in August and November of next year. I do not know that one. I do not know, but as far as my office goes, if there's an election, we make sure that we carry it out and we try to bring democracy to life.
And this is, if I'm not mistaken, this is the second election you've done since taking office?
We did, we did municipal election in March, and then we did a special election for the Senate and House, special election, and then this will be the third. So I'm all experienced now.
Yeah, I was gonna say, as you've been going through, I mean, these are kind of smaller elections, but I mean, what, how have things progressed and what kind of things are you guys changing and initiatives you're doing to kind of streamline things and make it easier for people?
Well, leading up to next year, we are making sure that we have more early voting locations so that we can reduce those long lines and make them more convenient. So we did have 22 early voting sites last November, and we're going to increase that to 28 and our supervisor's office. So that's about 29 locations. We are still in the process of determining where all those are, but we'll announce them far in advance. We also are opening a satellite location of our office at the West Oaks Mall in partnership with the tax collector, Scott Randolph's office. And that will probably be open around March. And that'll be a great way to interact with voters and get people registered to vote, and they can update their address and learn about elections, and we can share all sorts of information about how to vote. So we're excited about that, our first satellite location.
And what sort of assurances can you give to voters that this election is secure, that every vote is counted?
Well, I've, since I've been in this role, I have really been looking closely at every step along the way. And I'm reassured at how secure our elections are, whether it's vote-by-mail process. There are so many, there's chain of custody, ways that we monitor and secure the whole process from start to finish. We have people who can, if they've ordered their vote-by-mail, they can sign up for ballot tracks where they can see when their ballot has been mailed to them and when it's been received by our office. That we are open for public viewing, and we have public testing. So there's a lot of transparency. You can watch today's canvassing board meeting through our live stream. So there's lots of checks and balances, and we're always looking to improve.
What's the biggest thing for folks to remember today in order to cast a vote effectively?
I would make sure that you, you know who you're going to vote for before you get in, at the polling place, but it's going to be a very short ballot. You only have to vote for one person. So there's only going to be one oval that you fill in. It should not take very long, as long as you know who you're going to vote for. You come in, you sign in, you give them your photo ID, your signature ID. They'll hand you the ballot. You vote it, put it in the machine, get your "I voted" sticker, and it won't take very long. And you're on your way, and then you can watch the results starting at 7:00 PM. Thank you! Well, each of the, each of the contests today have a number of candidates. So if there was only two, we could, we could tell you that there would be a winner today, but there could be a runoff in any of the three districts. Unless they get over 50. Yes, 50% plus one. So we'll be watching. And then at 7:00 PM today, the first, the preliminary results of early voting and vote-by-mail will be released. And then we'll wait for the election day totals to come in.
All right. So we will be keeping a close eye on that. That is the Orange County Supervisor of Elections, Karen Castor-Dental, speaking earlier today. Now, if you live in Orlando and need to find out more information about your voting location, your polling location, what you need to do, you can find that information online. Let me give you, I'm going to walk you through some of the information here. This is on ocfelections.gov, and this is the website of the Orange County Supervisor of Elections. So if you see here on this very first page, this is the homepage, and it has that saying, "Vote City of Orlando 2025 Election." If you click there, it has all the information you need to know. Now, some of these are deadlines that have come and gone if you were wanting to register to vote, if you were wanting to request a vote-by-mail ballot, or if you were wanting to early vote. So today is Election Day, and if you scroll down, you can find a full list of the polling places. These are the polling places that are open for the City of Orlando's 2025 election. If you don't know which one is your precinct, or which one is even your district, you can also glow, go and click on where it says, "Download City of Orlando Municipal District Map." They have all kinds of different maps for each of those districts where you can find your address and your polling location. And this also shows, kind of at a glance, all of the Orlando precincts and the council districts. So these, you see the districts 1 being there, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. The election's today for 1, 3, and 5. And it does break these down. If you zoom in, I'm going to zoom in here on the 5th district, just to give you an idea. You can see where these, those OL in the numbers, those are the precincts. Those are the different voting locations, and that is what would correspond with your voting location, depending on where you live. And again, there are more detailed maps where you can find your address and that kind of thing, to make sure that you show up at the right location if you are registered to vote today. So we'll be watching this race closely throughout the day, following those results tonight as well. You'll be able to find that on Fox 35 News later today and on fox35orlando.com. We're going to take a break here on Fox 35 News Plus, but we hope you keep it here because we're getting ready to take a break. And on the other side of this break, going to be talking a little Florida Gators basketball. The defending national champions back in action last night. It was a loss against a tough ranked team, but we are going to talk more about the season ahead for the Gators and what's in store for them. So we hope you keep it right here. But right now, I'm going to give you another live look at downtown Orlando, and we'll be right back. Welcome back into Fox 35 News Plus. I'm Garrett Weimer, and thanks for joining us on this Tuesday morning, live on Fox Local and on YouTube. The defending national champion, Florida Gators basketball team, back in action last night in Las Vegas. And a tough game to start the season against another ranked opponent, the Arizona Wildcats. They ended up losing that game, but certainly doesn't damper the expectations for the rest of the season for this team. We're going to bring in Graham Hall, who is the Florida Gators reporter with 247 Sports. Graham, always good talking with you. We appreciate you joining us this morning here on Fox 35 News Plus.
Thanks for having me. Absolutely. You know, an exciting game, just defending national champions, taking on formidable foe. You know, you have to go back to 2019 to find the last time that the reigning national champion took on a tough opponent in their home opener. You know, sometimes you want to start with a little bit of a tune-up game, but that wasn't the case for Florida. Face a really, really good Arizona team that is going to help them in the long run, even if it's a little bit disappointing to see Florida's 12-game win streak dating back to last season snapped in this one on Monday night in Las Vegas.
Yeah, you bring up a good point. It's not often that we see a team like Florida playing someone like Arizona, the preseason number 13 team, to start the season. But what did you see last night? What kind of stood out to you that the Gators can, can say, hey, we did that well, or something we need to improve on? What stood out to you about the game last night?
I think a lot of room for improvement. Let's start there. I think you look at Thomas Hout moving to the 3. He was stellar last night. Career-high 27 points for him. Showed that he has the ability to play out on the wing, can defend a little bit smaller players, and also can crash and be able to contribute on the rebounding battle. You know, I thought that he looked really good. Didn't have the shooting performance that he would have liked, certainly not as clutch as it was in the NCAA tournament a few months ago, but he looked really good to me, and the ability to play the 4 is impressive as well. Florida needs to be a little bit more physical, though. I think that you look at this game, they just got outmuscled in a lot of ways by Arizona. And some people will sit here and make a lazy take and say, oh, you know, they were resting on their laurels, they were still riding the high of being the national champions. If that is the case, that's going to be corrected very swiftly here. Todd Golden and Carlin Hartman and Florida's coaching staff has not let up on the gas despite winning the national championship. They have aspirations. And I think for Florida, they've done a really good job coaching physicality, and they were anything, I think, a little bit too physical at times. Ruben Shinieleau playing 17 minutes, fouling out of that contest. You know, he had the flagrant foul, and it seemed to be a little bit of a, there was a disparity in some of the officiating decisions. I mean, he got his jersey ripped there and then had an errant elbow where he ends up picking up a flagrant foul. It just wasn't the night for him. And Alex Condon struggled as well. I thought he flashed at times, didn't really have the outside shooting performance, the spacing, the floor that you were looking for after he tested the NBA draft waters, and knew that that was an aspect of his game that he was going to have to work on at the collegiate level if he did want to be the first-round NBA pick that he aspires to be and was looking to be back in April. I think also for Florida's backcourt, it's going to take a little bit of time for Boogie Fland and Xavier Lee to gel and to hit their stride. They had an off-shooting night. I think they combined to go 8 of 26 from the floor. Xavier Lee was 3 of 14, didn't knock down as many outside shots as he's used to having, looked really good at penetrating the lane and getting to the rim, made a few errant passes there that they're going to look to have him clean up and play it a little bit more safe at times. But anytime your starting guard duo combines to go 8 of 26 for the floor, leaves a few points at the charity stripe as well. There's a lot that you can hang your hat on, and also a lot that you can clean up. Florida's not panicking whatsoever. They knew that it would be big shoes to fill. When you go from Boogie Fland, you go from Walter Clayton, Will Richard, and Elijah Martin, to Boogie Fland and Xavier Lee, anyone expecting it to be an overnight transition, I think was a little bit wishful thinking. But that's why you play these games early on. That's why you get battle-tested. You can see how you handle adversity. And now it's going to be all about how Florida responds from here.
Let's talk big picture here, because obviously we know how well this team did last year on the way to a national championship, but they lost some key players. And so what do they have to do to kind of replicate the success that they saw, even with some, some different players on the roster this year?
Well, late-game shot-making was so fantastic for Walter Clayton and Will Richard, and Elijah Martin was just a guy who brought championship experience, you know, having made a Final Four, knew what it'd take to get to being on the cusp of competing for a national championship. Those are tough things to replicate. You know, Walter Clayton was dynamic, and expecting someone to step in and fill his shoes and replicate what he was able to do is probably just wishful thinking. Florida realized that they would look better, would look different offensively in the backcourt here, that they were hoping there would be a little bit more facilitating, some better ball movement in a sense, but they were giving up in a guy who would knock down 30-foot jump shots at a consistent rate and make you go, wow, on a regular basis. That, that's something that is going to be a tough ask. Boogie Fland is dealing with some unknown injury of sorts, which may have hindered his ability to perform at the level that he's capable of. You saw him have to, he got fouled and then couldn't shoot the free throws. And Tommy Lloyd chooses Micah Handlockton, arguably Florida's worst free throw shooter, to go out there and take the free throws. He misses a couple of them. Boogie was dealing with something in the lower body, and getting him back to full strength will be paramount to Florida's success. But they're also going to need the veteran leadership. You know, Xavier Lee and Boogie Fland don't really have the experience in the SEC. You remember, the Boogie Fland got injured in January of this past year, this past season, and missed the majority of the SEC slate. Xavier Lee comes in from Princeton. Those guys are going to need to adjust a little bit to the nonstop physicality at this level in power-five basketball, and it's going to take some time. The biggest knock that people made about Florida's non-conference schedule last year was that frankly, it was too easy. It was used against them when it came to March and when it came It was used against them when it came to March and when it came to NCAA tournament seeding. That's not going to be an issue this year. There's a huge slate of Quad One and Quad Two opportunities. Miami in two weeks, TCU, Duke in the ACC-SEC Challenge, UConn up at Madison Square Garden. They're going to be better for these games even if they continue to take a few lumps. Expecting them to go out of non-conference playing with an undefeated mark was probably an unrealistic expectation, but this is a long season and they're going to be better for it as long as they make the corrections that they need to make. And now they've got them on film and they know what they need to do moving forward, starting Thursday against UNF.
You mentioned that those Duke and UConn games, I'm pretty sure those are back-to-back games in early December as well. So that's a tough stretch pretty quickly for this Gators team. Let's fast-forward, Graham, to April. Let's say, and let's see if we're talking again about a back-to-back national champion Gators team. What will have gone right for this team for them to do that? What's the key to this team's success this season?
I think they can be a little bit better at knocking down long-range shots. I mean, going seven for 27, not a recipe for success. Maybe they don't take as many moving forward as you saw last night. You can be successful in this day and age without a three-point shot. I mean, look at Arizona, they only attempted five three-pointers last night, knocked down two of them, and they scored 93 points. They're going to need to be physical in low post, whether that is on the glass, getting second-chance opportunities, which Florida has been really, really good at the last two years. Micah Handlockton and Alex Condon had two of the best seasons in Florida program history as offensive rebounders. Being able to defend without fouling is also going to be key for Florida, even if they have the depth in the frontcourt with Micah Handlockton fully healthy, best shape of his life. Ruben Shinieleu, that is a luxury to have, two starting caliber centers there for you. They're going to need to make sure that they defend a little bit better and play more physical. And they're going to have to have a lot of breaks go their way. Let me just be quite honest, I know that every time we talk about breaking down the opponent, you talk about what's in your control, but injuries are a factor of this game. Part of the reason why Florida was able to make the run that they did is that they got fully healthy in March and you have to be able, it's an intangible quality, to make sure that you have everyone available. It's that old cliche of the best ability is availability, and that is going to be the key for Florida. They like the depth that they have, they're going to get a little bit healthier. I mentioned Boogie Flan. A.J. Brown also still working his way back into game shape. Alex Lloyd, a promising freshman from that central Florida area, who they're still really, really high on. He did not play last night. And C.J. Ingram as well, coming off the bench. He's going to continue to get more comfortable and develop offensively. If they can develop that depth, play with physicality that's necessary to compete for 40 minutes on any given night, and be just a little bit more efficient, whether it's from the charity stripe where they went 20 for 30, left 10 points at the line in a game that was decided by six points, or making sure that they shoot better than 25.7% from long range, that is going to be key for Florida. But it all starts with being the more physical team. The Gators were not that last night, and they're going to need to make sure that they improve that if they want to be back there in the conversation in March. And give yourself a chance, based on matchups, based on how you look for 40 minutes against just the next opponent in front of you, going 1-0 every single game the rest of the way. If they get there in March and give themselves a chance, this team, in my opinion, is still well-equipped to be able to be there on the biggest stage in April.
Well, that would be exciting to see, and it all starts with that game last night. And like you said, a tough loss, but a tough team. And, you know, one of those games that, like you said, they'll be better for that. When you're playing those tough non-conference opponents, you know, it certainly gets you better.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's the key for Florida here, is just making sure that they get better one game at a time. The losses will be forgiven against the likes of an Arizona or even a Duke in a UConn if Florida is sitting there in March and they've secured a two or three seed, even if they've taken, you know, seven, eight, nine losses there. If they get into the conversation in March and are really peaking, just like they did last year, you know, this wasn't a team that people talked about really in February even as a national championship contender. You remember, Micah Handlockton was still uncertain if he was going to play or not. It looked like he was not going to play. Alex Condon missed two weeks with injury. Florida had to overcome multiple injuries down the stretch there. Will Richard battled through a toe injury that I don't think many people realize. He was in a lot of pain before games and playing through pain. If they are getting into February and are hitting their stride and peaking there, no one's going to sit back here and say, well, you know, we lost to Arizona on November 3rd. No, they're going to be sitting there and talking about Florida's potential, and as long as you gradually improve, that's going to be what dominates the conversation. So a lot of work for Florida to do to be there, to be in that conversation in March and potentially into April, but they have a lot to clean up right now. They understand that, and this team seems well-equipped to do that. They're not going to rest on their laurels of anything. This is a desirable thing for Todd Golden and his coaching staff. He wanted to see, wants to see how Florida responds to some adversity. It didn't take long for it to happen. How they respond from here, how motivated they are, how these guys are going to get coached in the weeks ahead is what is going to be, is going to dictate Florida's ceiling and whether or not they can even be in contention to go back-to-back, which is such a rare feat that within the program, it's not being talked about a ton because you have so many new pieces, you have new faces who haven't experienced that. And to put that level of expectation on them, that's a little bit of, it can be crippling at times. So it's one game at a time for Florida, making the improvements they have to make. And then we'll see in a couple of months here if these improvements in this early-season adversity pave the way to Florida being one of the teams that's in the mix to cut down the nets once again.
Would love to see it. Graham Hall, Florida Gators reporter from 247 Sports. We appreciate you joining us this morning here on Fox 35 News Plus.
Always my pleasure. Y'all take care out there.
All right, you do the same. We're going to take a break and we'll be right back. All right, we are clear. Graham, thank you very much. Welcome back into Fox 35 News Plus. Give you a live look at the Senate floor, which has been open for a couple of hours now. You see at the very bottom there, Senate Majority Leader John Thune speaking to a fellow senator. A vote currently going on to reopen the government. This is another one of the test votes, a 60-vote majority needed to invoke a cloture to advance that GOP funding bill that has failed 13 times on the floor of the Senate and failing, expected to fail this 14th time as it continues. Democrats not expected to change their positions at this time. So we are potentially heading into the longest government shutdown in history. It is day 35, and by the end of the day, that would pass the previous longest government shutdown. Let me give you a live look right now in the House gallery where we are expecting to hear from Democratic House Minority Leader Hakeem Jeffries, a Democrat from New York, who is expected to hold a news conference here in just a couple of minutes, expected around noon, where he will discuss where things stand. We did hear earlier from House Speaker Mike Johnson and the Republican leadership in the House talking about things on this day 35. But we also have some more news from the President, Donald Trump, responding on Truth Social just a little bit ago, talking about SNAP benefits. And before I pull up his social media post on Truth Social, I do just want to remind you that yesterday, the breaking news we had about this was that two federal courts had ordered the Trump administration to pay out those SNAP benefits. That happened last week. Yesterday, filings showed that the Trump administration announced plans to pay out half of those November benefits, of 50% of what would have been expected for that. While this morning, in fact, just a little bit ago, a little less than an hour ago, President Donald Trump putting this on Truth Social, saying SNAP benefits, which increased by billions and billions of dollars, mini-fold during crooked Joe Biden's disastrous term in office, due to the fact that they were haphazardly handed to anyone for the asking as opposed to just those in need, which is the purpose of SNAP, will be given only when the radical left Democrats open up government, which they can easily do, and not before. Thank you for your attention to this matter, signed, President Donald J. Trump. So it appears that the Trump administration is going to push back against the rulings by the judges to pay out those benefits. And this post on Truth Social, in contrast to the court filings from the Trump administration yesterday, saying that they would pay out half of those benefits for the month of November. So unclear where exactly things stand right now. I'm sure that Hakeem Jeffries will be asked about this during that news conference. We hope to bring that to you live here in just a couple of minutes. So we are standing by for that, and we'll bring that to you when it does begin. Meanwhile, in West Palm Beach earlier today, Attorney General James Uthmeyer was there holding a news conference announcing a number of arrests, a takedown of what they call a major drug trafficking ring in West Palm Beach and operating out of several other counties as well. They said this was a six-month-long investigation, and they, among the arrests, were two drug traffickers who, they said, investigators say were selling drugs out of a flea market in South Florida. This was the Attorney General talking at a news conference just a little bit ago and giving details of that takedown of a major drug ring.
All right. Thanks, everybody, for being here in Palm Beach this morning. We've got another great rule-of-law, tough-on-crime announcement. I think by now you know that's how we roll here in Florida. As you see violent crime and murder rates sparking in other parts of the country, especially in blue sanctuary states, we continue to drive crime lows here in Florida because we get it. It's not that complicated, it's not rocket science. You back your law enforcement, you defend them, you empower them to do their job, you give them the tools they need to be successful, and then you get out of their way and let them do their job. And here in Florida, we're blessed, from our state police to our sheriffs to our city PDs, we do it well. They do a great job, and it's an honor every day to work with them and support them. And then we prosecute to the fullest. Here in Florida, we throw the book at you. We are not soft on crime, we do not believe in leniency. If you do the crime here, you do the time, and we will hold you accountable. And I think people in this state appreciate that, and we see more and more families flocking to Florida because they know this is the safest state in which to raise a family. So this morning, I'm joined here, we'll have a few other speakers, great Martin County Sheriff, John Bootnsek, Palm Beach County Chief Deputy, Robert Allen, Okeechobee County Sheriff's Office Captain, Robert Coleman, West Palm Beach Police Department Assistant Chief, Al Musco. Did I say that correctly?
Yes, sir.
All right, very good. And from my team, our Office of Statewide Prosecution, Assistant Statewide Prosecutor, Chris Olawen, who's been handling this prosecution. So today, we're announcing the takedown of another large drug trafficking network. I think we're at five arrests with more coming very soon. You had hundreds and hundreds of grams of dangerous narcotics ranging from fentanyl to meth, cocaine. And of course, where you take down a large drug operation, you find weapons. So several handguns and automatic rifles were seized as well. So as you got a president blowing up these fentanyl boats in the middle of the ocean, we're going to keep blowing up these networks right here in the state, letting people know that we are tough on crime, we will hold wrongdoers accountable, and that's not going to fly here in this state. It's been an honor to help the president shut down the border where we've seen a lot of this dangerous activity coming, but we still have a lot of work to do in the state to route out these bad actors that think they're going to get away with it. So we're going to keep our record crime lows here in Florida, we're going to hold bad guys accountable, and we're going to protect our families. So with that, I'll turn it over to Sheriff Bootnsek.
Thank you, General, and it's good to be here today with all of our partners. We work together on a daily basis. And while the Martin County Sheriff's Office had a small role in the grand scheme of how large this case was, this is a good message to everybody that with our collaborative efforts with all these men and women standing behind me, the men and women in the room, we can reach out and touch you anywhere. If you commit crime in Florida, we can catch you in another state, we can catch you anywhere in the state of Florida, because we've broken down the barriers, our jurisdictional boundaries, and we work together to do what you've paid us to do, and that's to keep the residents in our counties and in the state of Florida safe. So this case today exemplifies our working relationship, our resolve to go out there and touch bad guys anywhere. There's no more defeating us again by our jurisdictional boundaries. We're here to work together, we're here to make a difference in our state. And so thank you, General. Thank you for your prosecutors, your statewide prosecutors that pitched in to make this case possible, and we'll keep doing what we do and keeping everybody safe. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Sheriff. All right, Robert.
There's not a whole lot more to add than that, other than this is another great example of cooperation through agencies from this stretch from Miami-Dade up to St. Lucie County out west to Okeechobee County, and I believe it has tentacles all the way up to Virginia. There's just another great example when all the agencies cooperate together, Florida Department of Law Enforcement, statewide prosecutor, and every state, local, federal agency along the way, when we all get together and we work cooperatively with each other, the good things happen. We put bad guys in jail, we get weapons off the street, and we take drugs off the street, drugs out of our children's hands. And that's our main goal here, is to save lives and to keep the community safe. So I appreciate everyone being here and the hard work that mostly the agents, we stand up here and we kind of, we're in the cameras and we get the, kind of the fame of some of this, but it's our agents on the street that are out there risking themselves daily, doing hand-to-hand deals with these dangerous felons, buying drugs and getting guns off the street. So we can't bring them up here and show them on camera for obvious reasons, but they're the ones who really deserve the credit and should be standing here. So thank you all for being here.
Yeah, agents put their lives on the line every day to keep people safe, and that's why it's so important to us to ensure that we're prosecuting. We're not going to let these guys out. We're going to send a message to law enforcement. We've got your back every day. Okeechobee County Sheriff's Office Captain, Robert Coleman.
So good morning. On behalf of Sheriff Steven from the Okeechobee County Sheriff's Office, we'd just like to tell everyone we appreciate their cooperation. You know, we're a small town and we really need their cooperation to get these big things done. Once again, we'd like to say thank you for that.
All right, West Palm Beach PD Assistant Chief, Al Musco.
Thank you very much. I'd like to also recognize Deputy Chief Tony Shear to my left. Once again, this is unprecedented collaboration amongst these agencies. Help move, ensure that these criminals are taken off the street. It's a testament to what we can accomplish when we all come together, work together collectively for the safety of our citizens and our communities. Thank you.
And Chris, you want to give a little more info on the case?
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. First, I want to thank Attorney General F. Meyer and statewide prosecutor McVeigh for giving our office the resources and the tools necessary to investigate and prosecute cases like this one. The Attorney General's Office is committed to stopping drug traffickers in the state, and a huge part of the success is the collaboration with law enforcement, as you've seen today with all these different agencies. I specifically want to thank Josh Dachas and Monique Wilson, two other statewide prosecutors that were crucial in their assistance on this case. I want to specifically thank the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office for the countless hours of overtime and man-hours they put into investigating and building this case. Also, thank plethora of other agencies, including Okeechobee County Sheriff's Office, Martin County Sheriff's Office, West Palm Beach Police Department, FDLE. Martin County Sheriff's Office, West Palm Beach Police Department, FDLE, the United States Postal Inspection Service, DEA, and numerous other agencies that were involved with this huge, large-scale operation. The seamless collaboration between the agencies in this case allowed for numerous individuals to be surveilled, investigated, and arrested for the crimes across several cities, counties, and even states in this case. The team effort led to felony arrest warrants for seven suspects across two different counties. It stopped a large-scale narcotics operation that was selling narcotics at multiple locations across the state, including the 45th Street Flea Market here in Palm Beach County. It also resulted in the search and seizure of over 300 grams of fentanyl, a kilogram of cocaine, 400 grams of meth, numerous firearms, and several other controlled substances. As we've seen for several years now, fentanyl is a very dangerous and deadly drug that affects communities across our state and our country. Fentanyl is responsible for tens of thousands of deaths across the country every year, and although there's still work to be done, the fentanyl overdose numbers have recently decreased here in Palm Beach County. Multi-agency cases like this one are great examples of why these numbers have dropped. And as a result of the great work between the agencies in this case and this collaboration, law enforcement was able to remove a large quantity of fentanyl, dangerous drugs off the street, and make our state safer. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Thanks to you and your team. I think by now it's clear, we prosecute to the fullest, and again, it's not rocket science. We help these guys behind us, they do the work, thanks to our investigators and agents. It's great to work together in Florida across agency lines, we coordinate seamlessly, and that's why we're so effective. I think we've got time for a couple of questions about the case, if anybody has any. Yes, ma'am.
You said the seven suspects were arrested across two counties. Which counties were those ones?
Chris?
It was Palm Beach and Okeechobee.
All right, thanks, everybody.
From West Palm Beach to Daytona Beach, here's a live look at Daytona Beach from our Hard Rock Hotel camera, live right now in Volusia County. We're going to take a break here on Fox 35 News Plus, but we'll be right back after this.
You're watching Fox 35 News Plus, streaming on Fox Local.
Welcome back into Fox 35 News Plus. This is House Minority Leader Hakeem Jeffries, a Democrat from New York, who is speaking right now about the government shutdown, talking about SNAP benefits, healthcare costs. He began his news conference, I should note, by offering condolences to the family of their former colleague Liz Cheney, the daughter of former Vice President Dick Cheney, who we learned today passed away. He also talked about Election Day and the importance of folks going out and making sure their voice is heard at the ballot box. So let's go ahead and listen in as Leader Jeffries speaks live on this day 35 of the government shutdown, as the Senate now currently holding the test vote, 14th test vote, on the House funding bill. Listen in.
Democrats will continue to fight to lower the high cost of living, to fix our broken healthcare system, and to clean up corruption in the Congress, in the courts, and certainly as it relates to Donald Trump and his administration, the most corrupt administration in American history. We want to reopen the government, we want to find a bipartisan path forward toward enacting a spending agreement that actually makes life better for the American people, that lowers costs for the American people, as opposed to the Trump economy where things are getting more expensive by the day. And of course, we have to decisively address the Republican healthcare crisis that is crushing the American people all across the land. Questions?
Good afternoon. We hear there's a little bit of a falling next door in the Senate on this. We don't know what that means and what that would look like. But considering the exercise that Democrats in the House went through in March, how much skepticism would there be from House Democrats on any sort of agreement that would come over from the Senate?
We said from the very beginning that we will evaluate in good faith any bipartisan agreement that emerges from the Senate, reopens the government, makes life better for the American people, and decisively addresses the Republican healthcare crisis. Until we see details, we're not in position to do much more than that.
Are you more optimistic than you were at all, based on what you're hearing from next door?
We're in the middle of a 35-day government shutdown. Donald Trump is unlawfully withholding billions of dollars in SNAP benefits from 42 million Americans and 16 million children. There's nothing to be optimistic about relative to the cruelty and the pain that Donald Trump and Republicans continue to inflict on the American people. There's nothing to be optimistic about when it comes to the fact that Donald Trump shut the government down, they're forcing hundreds of thousands of people to be out on furlough or to work without pay. They refuse to address the healthcare crisis that Republicans have created. In a year where they enacted the largest cut to Medicaid in American history, hospitals, nursing homes, and community-based health centers are closing because of Republican policies all across America, the country is facing the possibility of a $536 billion cut to Medicare at the end of the year if Congress doesn't act. And Republicans are refusing to extend the Affordable Care Act tax credits because they would rather gut the healthcare of the American people. There's nothing to be optimistic about because of what Trump and Republicans have done to this country. They've gone way too far, and the American people know it, and the results today are going to decisively reflect that fact.
Mr. President, can I follow up? Just to make a finer point on that, you said in September, any agreement related to protecting the healthcare of the American people has to be ironclad and in legislation. It does not sound like whatever agreement comes out of the Senate will be in legislation. Will you accept something that is a handshake deal?
It's the same answer that I just gave.
I know that the filibuster is a Senate mechanism, but President Trump has repeatedly, you know, as recently as this morning, called for Senate Republicans to abolish the filibuster, pass the CR with a simple majority and also a host of other Republican priorities. You've criticized him for not inviting the legislative leaders to the White House to negotiate. What are your thoughts about him continuing to call for the abolishment of the filibuster within the context of his unwillingness to negotiate? Does that indicate to you that he has no interest in sitting down with not only his legislative leaders, but you and Leader Schumer?
Well, Donald Trump has taken a my-way-or-the-highway approach to his presidency from the very beginning, and he's used to Republicans simply bending the knee to him. Because these Republicans on Capitol Hill, on the House side and on the Senate side, they don't work for the American people, they work for Donald Trump. And so he's going to continue to make his position clear until they eventually cave, which is what they always do. Because Republicans in this Congress have been nothing more than a reckless rubber stamp for Donald Trump's extreme agenda. And Donald Trump keeps making the point that Republicans have shut the government down, and they're the only ones that have the power to open it up. Republicans who have complete control of the House, the Senate, and the presidency. Republicans who are the ones who passed the one big ugly bill without a single Democratic vote. We strongly oppose their one big ugly bill. They passed it on their own because they have complete control of government. And in that one big ugly bill, they enacted the largest cut to Medicaid in American history, ripping health insurance away from 14 million Americans. And at the same time, they cut $186 billion from SNAP. That's the largest cut to nutritional assistance in this country's history. They literally, in July, ripped food from the mouths of hungry children, seniors, and veterans, and all of this was done so that Republicans could provide massive tax breaks to their billionaire donors in their one big ugly bill. And they did it on their own, my way or the highway, in terms of jamming extreme Republican ideology down the throat to the American people. And so Donald Trump expects to see more of the same from the puppets that are Republicans in the House and the Senate.
You said that Republicans always cave. Leader Trump said that the votes aren't in to abolish the filibuster. Are you saying that ultimately Donald Trump's request or demand will win out?
If history is any indication, ultimately, compliant Republicans in the Senate are going to cave to the demands of their puppet master, Donald J. Trump. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver. This election cycle, Republicans have relied heavily on cultural issues, particularly trans issues. If they lose in Virginia and in New Jersey, what does that say to you about Republicans' reliance and dependence on communicating and messaging on trans issues against them?
At this point, it's not a question of if Republicans are going to lose. I was in Virginia earlier today, I was in New Jersey over the weekend, I was in California a few weeks ago. They are going to lose because the American people know that Republican policies have failed them. And it starts with the economy, that Republicans promised to lower the high cost of living. But costs aren't going down in America, costs are going up. The cost of living in this country is out of control, and Donald Trump has not done a damn thing to change it. And in the midst of this 35-day government shutdown, has spent multiple weekends on the golf course, holding "let them eat cake" type of parties at his luxury resort in South Florida, found $40 billion to bail out a right-wing wannabe dictator in Argentina, and yet Donald Trump can't find a dime to extend the Affordable Care Act tax credits or provide nutritional assistance to hungry children in America to ensure that they can put food on the table. The American people are smart. They see all of this happening in real time. And of course, what Republicans always do is try to distract the American people, as they've done in New Jersey and Virginia, and it will not be successful. It's over for these people. And we're going to see it today, and we're going to see it during the midterm elections next November.
At this point, is a record-breaking shutdown a pattern of the Trump administration?
It was a 35-day government shutdown during the first Trump administration. This is day 35 of the Trump-Republican shutdown. Donald Trump and the Republicans cannot govern. These people are deeply unqualified. And they spent all of last year lying to the American people that they were going to lower the high cost of living, while at the same time distancing themselves from Project 2025. But they've spent all of this year doing nothing to lower the high cost of living. In fact, costs are going up, not down, while they spend all of their time, Republicans spend all of their time implementing the extreme, toxic Project 2025 agenda, including, by the way, as part of Project 2025, ripping away nutritional benefits and SNAP from the American people. I think that's on page 300 or so of Project 2025. Shutting down the federal government, agency by agency by agency, part of Project 2025. Gutting the healthcare of the American people, as Republicans have done all throughout this year, part of Project 2025. And so the dysfunction, the cruelty, the inability of Republicans to make life better for the American people is, of course, now on full display. And Republicans can't blame anyone other than themselves because they have complete control of the House, the Senate, and the presidency.
House Minority Leader Hakeem Jeffries continuing to take questions from reporters. Day 35 of the government shutdown. The Senate just failed to pass the test vote to advance the House Continuing Resolution, the funding bill, for a 14th time, all but ensuring the longest government shutdown in history at this point. We're going to take a break here on Fox 35 News Plus, but we'll be right back. Welcome back into Fox 35 News Plus. I want to give you this live look where we are waiting to hear from Volusia County Sheriff Mike Chitwood any minute now, talking about the arrest of a former Volusia County deputy. On the right, you are seeing a surveillance photo of Douglas Meyer, a former Volusia County Sheriff deputy who was arrested, now facing charges in connection with a check-kiting scheme, where investigators say he was writing bad checks at different credit unions and then essentially taking advantage of the time that it took for those checks to clear and accessing those funds. The investigators also say that at one point, he showed up in his uniform, as you see in this surveillance photo, to try to get them to release a hold on the funds in the account. So the Sheriff Chitwood has said that this ex-deputy's badge is going to be melted down, that he hopes he never has a job in law enforcement again. So we expect to hear from Volusia County Sheriff Mike Chitwood any minute now, and we will bring that to you live when it does begin. I will go ahead and take you back to Capitol Hill, though, where we're hearing from House Minority Leader Hakeem Jeffries, speaking with reporters now after a 14th test vote on the House Continuing Resolution, just failed moments ago in the Senate. Let's listen in. Let's listen in.
... we emerge to three districts like in Virginia. Has the positive response in California to that effort influenced kind of the efforts of Democrats across the country to go back at, you know, some of these...
We've been, we've been clear from the very beginning. I said it months ago, months ago, that Democrats would not let Donald Trump and Republicans gerrymander the national congressional map as part of their effort to rig the midterm election. We said it months ago, and that California would be the beginning, but that there would be a decisive Democratic response throughout America from coast to coast and at all points in between. And now, the American people can see that we absolutely are determined and committed to a continuing response that is decisive, that is immediate, that is forceful, and that is designed to ensure that there are free and fair elections in this country when it comes to deciding which party should control Congress in 2026. Democrats will not unilaterally disarm. Democrats recognize the moment that we're in, that the pushback will continue to be ongoing and forceful, and we will not allow Donald Trump and his Republican sycophants to undermine a free and fair national congressional map as part of his toxic effort to rig the midterm elections. If I said it, I meant it. Next question.
Mr. Leader, just back on ACA subsidies, do you believe that you would be able to keep your caucus together on the deal, a bipartisan deal from the Senate on ACA subsidies, if it does not include the permanent extensions that you originally advocated for?
As I've indicated, we are going to evaluate whatever is presented from the Senate, if it emerges in good faith and in a bipartisan way, as long as it addresses the Affordable Care Act tax credit issue in some way, shape, or form. We are in open enrollment right now. Tens of millions of Americans are about to experience their premiums, copays, and deductibles skyrocket. It requires action. And what is clear is that Republicans increasingly understand that. Marjorie Taylor Greene, for weeks, has made that clear. Thirteen Republicans in the House wrote to Mike Johnson, the Deputy Speaker of the House, because apparently, according to Donald Trump, he's the Speaker of the House of Representatives. And they said that something needs to happen on the Affordable Care Act tax credits. And now we're seeing movement in the Senate because apparently Senate Republicans recognize that something needs to happen as it relates to extending the Affordable Care Act tax credits. So we'll evaluate any agreement, if an agreement is presented to us, as a caucus, but not before that.
Assuming that there is a bipartisan agreement in the Senate, done in good faith, do you believe that Congressman Johnson would be able to deliver that on his end in good faith in the House?
I think that depends on, you know, whether Donald Trump orders him to do it or not.
Thank you, Leader. So Congressman Trudy Garcia appears to be retiring, and it also appears that he waited up until the filing deadline to make this decision, thus paving the way for his chief of staff to have an uncontested primary. This is being called a machine tactic, like some people in your own party. Do you have an issue with how this was done?
I haven't had the conversation to evaluate the process that was utilized or to talk to Representative Garcia, so I'm not going to comment on it until I talk to him directly.
Thank you, Mr. Leader. Multiple of your Democratic colleagues have said that they gave their October paycheck to charity, or they deferred it completely. And last time you were asked this, you said you would make a decision over last weekend. So I just want to ask you again, what did you decide to do with your paycheck from October?
Did you not see that I answered that question, or are you just asking me to reiterate my answer? Because I did publicly make clear on Friday to my constituents and publicly that my paycheck has been withheld.
Thank you, Mr. Leader. Secretary Duffy said today that this shutdown drags into next week. There's a possibility that the FAA could be closing parts of U.S. airspace because of the lack of controllers. And then just in the last hour or so, there's a ground stop at Reagan National because of a security threat. How could major aviation issues affect your calculus or anyone's calculus up here when it comes to the shutdown?
Well, Duffy needs to start acting like a Transportation Secretary and stop trying to pretend to be a reality.
Here's Sheriff Chitwood getting ready to begin talking here. Let's go ahead and listen in as he discusses the arrest of a former deputy. Let's listen in live outside the sheriff's office.
Volusia County that depend on SNAP. That's over 80,000 of our residents who will be receiving no benefits for the month of November. So I was talking to Rabbi Lenick last week, and we talked, he was telling me about the uptick in food banks, of how they were seeing more and more people appearing there. So over the weekend, we hatched a scheme, and the scheme was, let's reach out to the Speedway, Daytona Beach, Walmart, our foundations, and see if there's any way we could do a one-time drive-through food bank for SNAP recipients only. And so far, we're ready to go. On Saturday, from nine to five, you can enter here off of NASCAR Drive, and you could drop off supplies, obviously fresh fruit, vegetables, eggs, cheese, milk, all of those things that you could drop off to us. There'll be volunteers here to take it and to start getting the bags together. We also have reached out to Walmart, and this is another suggestion we have. Walmart and Aldi are selling $40 gift cards that will feed 10 people during Thanksgiving. So far, we've gone out and bought $15,000 of gift cards based on donations from my foundation and from the Rabbi's Foundation, and we're still collecting donations for that. The objective here is to repeat SNAP benefits, no alcohol, no tobacco. So be careful when you're buying other gift cards. We're not, we're not going to be doing that. And lastly, I can't stress this enough, give yourself plenty of time. We're talking 39,000 households. There's no way we're going to be able to do that. But what we are doing is we are checking identification. You're going to have to present two forms. One is your SNAP identification, and two is real government ID matching that SNAP identification. And then you'll be admitted into the queue. We're starting 11:00 a.m. Sunday, and we'll be here until the supplies run out. You know, we're on the phone with some other providers, Trader Joe's. We're hoping that Aldi and Publix will come through. We just don't know. We know that there's a huge need there. We can't serve everybody. We're trying to help whatever families we can. So that's the volunteers on Saturday to drop off for us. Sunday, the folks that are coming to participate in the food bank, 11:00 a.m. is when we're going to start right here. And with that, I'd like to bring my partner here, Rabbi Lenick, up.
Thank you, Sheriff. So friends and neighbors, the Bible repeats 20, 30, 40 times, remember the heart of the stranger. And that's about empathy. We have to become and be a, an empathetic community. We have to show up for each other. No one's going to fix this except us. And that's why we're really hoping the big box stores are going to surprise us like manna from heaven and show up with trucks full of food, pallets and pallets of food. Secondly, I want you to know, just last week at our food bank, we serve average about 150 households a week. We doubled the number of first-time clients last week in anticipation of the cutting off of SNAP benefits. And tomorrow, we expect that number to double yet again. And so we have an opportunity to be part of a miracle, an opportunity to come together and show the world, really, and our friends and neighbors, that we don't just talk the talk here in Volusia County. We are going to walk the walk and feed the hungry because there is a chain of events that follows when nutrition is denied. Sick people get sicker. People with chronic illness have more chronic problems. Children go to school and are unable to concentrate. You can't imagine the domino effect from lack of nutrition, and we're determined to do whatever we can and to come together and solve this issue for our community. Chief.
Thank you, Rabbi, and thank you, Sheriff. I just wanted to take a minute to thank both the sheriff and the rabbi, as these two are the visionaries on this food drive. I just wanted to thank them for the opportunity to partner with them on this, as I know this is much needed in the county and specifically in this community that we serve. So I've reached out to one of our newest community partners, and Trader Joe's, and they seem very excited about also being a part of this food drive. So I haven't gotten confirmation for certain yet as far as how much they'll be able to donate, but I'm, you know, cautiously optimistic that they will also be contributing. And anything else that we can do as a department to help out, we're willing to do so. Thank you again, Sheriff.
Guys, got any questions?
Just details about volunteer aspect, the need for the volunteer bases?
I'll let the rabbi handle that one.
Yes, we're going to need a minimum of 50 volunteers on both days, Saturday and Sunday. On Saturday, when we're taking in food, we will need volunteers to sort the food and to bag the food to be distributed on Sunday. We need volunteers to arrive starting at eight in the morning and to work with us throughout the day. On Sunday, we'll begin the distribution at 11:00. We need volunteers on Sunday, starting at 10:00, to be able to put the bags of groceries into people's vehicles as they drive through. So yes, please show up. It's going to be a little chaotic, but out of that chaos is going to come some great things.
We're reaching out to the colleges and the churches to help us. Bethune-Cookman has already reached out to us to have students out here. So we're going to echo that out to our other universities here, Daytona State College, Emory Riddle, everybody's right here. That's the whole purpose of the Speedway. It's centrally located. We can get a lot of cars in here. So if you want to give us a couple hours, we'll gladly take that, those volunteers to come in and help us get up and running.
Yeah, and just one more question really quick. If this shutdown continues and these SNAP benefits are filled again, I know you said you're doing this one time, but are there backup plans if this continues?
You know, right now, we're focusing on the short term. I think when you look at the chief's job and my job, yeah, it's to go out and lock up the bad guys, but at the same token, you want to have a positive impact on your community. And when you look, and you're talking about 39,000 households in Volusia County, over 80,000 or more individuals that are affected by this, part of our job is to have that positive impact. So we're kind of hoping that this is going to help you get through till those checks get out there. But you know, I want to remind everybody of something. I'm not being here political when I say this. I'm going to quote Ronald Reagan exactly in one of his inaugural addresses. This present, in this present crisis, the government isn't the solution to the problem. The government is the problem.
And I imagine that sort of sentiment is a response, in a way, to Trump saying that it won't be continued unless the government is reopened because he said they were, quote, the benefits were, quote, "hazardly handed to anyone asking as opposed to those just in need."
You know, all I could tell you is I read the benefits in Florida. I mean, I read how you get on there. You know, you have to be on a certain percentage of what's the federal poverty line is. You have to be a United States citizen. You know, you have to have, you can't be a convicted drug dealer. You have to provide a social security number. You have to constantly update what you're doing. So I don't know the inner workings of it, but I do know that in Volusia County, 50% of the residents live paycheck to paycheck. And then look at the bigger picture here. While Democrats and Republicans are fighting like a bunch of morons that we put you there, how about all the people in the military and law enforcement and that make this country run that aren't getting a paycheck for 35 days now? Why are the pawns, the regular people here, while the people we elect to do our bidding are doing it on the backs of us? So I just think this entire thing is unfair to benefit a political agenda, whether you're Democrat or Republican, and the people are suffering. It's just not fair. So like I have always said, if you think the federal government's going to wipe your ass, they're not. It's up to each community to stand up and do what they can do for their people.
Sheriff, in today, really, what's it like to see communities support people coming together and helping one another?
That's what, that's what built this country, if you really think of it. The federal government is supposed to supply physiological needs and safety needs, right? Every human being needs to survive water, food, warmth, and shelter, right? Maslow's theory of relativity. That's number one. Number two is safety and security, the freedom of fear, the ability to provide for your family. That's government's two main functions. And yet, we have a government that can't do that for its citizens.
You know, talking about down the road, if this continues, we're hoping this event is going to motivate and inspire other potential partners in this coalition. There are many foundations in this community. This is a very charitable community, extraordinarily charitable community. And we're hoping, if you're listening and you're part of a family foundation or a communal foundation, you're going to reach out to us and continue this partnership after this weekend, if necessary.
If you get to your point, the way to fix the problem is to just cut everybody off, go in and fix it if there's a problem. You just don't blanketly wave a magic wand and say, we're just going to kick everybody off. That's, that's not how it works, you know? Go through and systematically do what you need to do. But there's a work requirement there. Everybody thinks it's a freebie. You have to work. So if somebody would take the time to Google the benefits in the state of Florida, you'll realize this isn't just sign up and you get handed out. If you're 16 to 59, you got to work, you know? And how many people don't make $50,000 a year? The federal poverty line for a family of four, I think, is 32 and change. So...
Let's also remember, here in Volusia County, we have a current statistic that says over 50% of our residents are literally living hand-to-mouth, paycheck to paycheck. And it takes one tough luck event in life to change the entire circumstance of a family. The second thing, I want to respond to this comment by the president about people taking advantage of the system. We see people, hundreds and hundreds of people, week after week. Our little tiny food bank will serve over 21,000 people this year. And I can tell you, the people that show up, they're not proud of it, and they show up because they have to. They show up, and you say, but for the grace of God, it's not me, and it's not you. And that's why we have to keep doing what we're doing.
But is this like putting a Band-Aid on a gunshot wound? I mean, at some point in time...
It is. It really is. I mean, we're mobilizing forces, hoping and praying that sometime in the month of November, this gets resolved. And that's what we're doing. And in fact, when I talked to the rabbi last week, and he talked about the number of food banks that are seeing the double the number of clients, people they've never seen before, it tells you there's a need there. So we're trying, in the short term, to plug that need. And again, if the federal, you think the federal government's going to wipe your ass, you're wrong. We, as a community, and I think every county as a community, should look and do what needs to be done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you guys for coming out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming out.
The sheriff's office, the Daytona Beach Police Chief, talking about, and some others as well, a rabbi with the Jewish Federation there, talking about this food drive at the Speedway, Daytona International Speedway, where they were holding this news conference outside the Speedway there in Daytona, where they are looking for volunteers and folks who can help, also going to distribute this food that is gathered to SNAP recipients. 39,000 households in Volusia County, according to the sheriff, that receive SNAP benefits that are in limbo right now with the government shutdown continuing, with President Trump today saying they're not going to pay out those SNAP benefits until the government is reopened. A lot of questions and some concern for families who use those SNAP benefits to put food on the table. And so the Volusia County Sheriff's Office, several other organizations, teaming up to try to provide some, some help for many of those families in Volusia County. So you see the details on your screen there right now. If you can help out, there's the information. If you need some help, Distribution Day is coming up on Sunday. We're going to take a quick break here on Fox 35 News Plus, but we'll be right back. take a quick break here on Fox 35 News Plus, but we'll be right back.
You know, he worked for us from 20 to 24. And then he left to go to work for the county for a better paying job. That when he got there, he realized that the green, the grass wasn't greener and he begged to come back and I let him come back. He wasn't back that long, maybe a year before he resigned again. This time he resigned, he was complaining about supervision. Well, we, we know the real reason now. The real reason is...
One second. Excuse us.
The real reason is he knew that this was going to come down, that he had cut those bad checks and he knew he was going to get locked up.
You always have a same stance when it comes to deputies and ex-deputies committing crimes in general. Could you just reiterate your answer?
Yeah, we're, we're not going to tolerate it. I mean, you know, in our line of work, there's two mistakes. There's a mistake of the head and there's a mistake of the heart. Mistake of the heart, you're fatal. You know what you're doing is illegal and you're going to do it anyway. And that's what he did. Mistake of the head is a different thing. You know, you come to work, you try to do the right thing, you step out of your car and man, you step into it. And for whatever reason, not enough information, you make a bad decision. Now, you're going to get hammered for that, but you shouldn't lose your career in most cases. But mistakes of the heart, man, you know exactly what you're doing. You know what the law is and you opted to violate the law and violate your oath of office and give us a black eye and yourself a black eye. So now in turn, we're going to hold you up. We're going to destroy your badge so nobody can ever wear that again.
No question, he knew exactly what he was doing.
How could you not? I mean, I know what's in my checking account. I know that I can't write a $7,000 check when I have $5 in my checking account, you know? It's not like you know, okay, I'm getting paid on Thursday, I'm going to mail the check on Monday and I'll be able to cover my mortgage, which I think most people at some point in time do. This was, you had no way that you had those funds. You knew that. You were trying to get money to impress a girl. Whatever you're trying to do, you knew you didn't do that. And that's fraud.
All of that ruined for $3,000.
For $2,000.
Volusia County Sheriff Mike Chitwood talking there, answering some questions about the arrest of that ex-deputy who is now in jail facing those charges in connection with an alleged fraud scheme that you heard them talking about just a moment ago. Want to give you a live look inside the White House press briefing room. We do expect to hear from Press Secretary Caroline Levitt here in just a few minutes. That briefing scheduled for 1 o'clock. Also, I want to let you know, we do plan on bringing you a news conference from Orlando coming up in just a little bit. An update on a house fire in Orlando, Paramore and South Street. This is a news conference happening around 1:15. We will be bringing that to you live as well when it begins. A one-story house fire there in Orlando earlier today. One person rescued. They say they were trapped in the building. We don't have any update on their condition or the circumstances surrounding this fire, but we are working on getting some more details. And again, that news conference expected to begin in about 20 minutes or so. And we will bring that to you live as well here on Fox Local. So a lot that we are tracking at this hour, we near 1 o'clock here on Fox 35 News Plus. You can see some of the tabs they've got there. Again, we are continuing to monitor that situation at Reagan National Airport. This is again, a live look at that airport in Washington DC where this flight, there's been some sort of security incident. This was an arriving flight into Washington DC. You could see some emergency vehicles around there and still working to learn some new details about what exactly is going on. But we do know that flights are grounded there right now. We're going to take another break here on Fox 35 News Plus, but we'll be right back after this. Welcome back into Fox 35 News Plus. Give you a live look in New York City where voters are going to the polls today and voting on their next mayor. It is a three-way race between candidates Zoran Mamdani, Andrew Cuomo and Curtis Sliwa. Mamdani is the Democratic candidate. You see Cuomo there, who is the former governor of New York. He is the independent candidate and Curtis Sliwa, the Republican candidate. A lot of folks here in Florida watching this race closely as well. We know there, as we have heard from state leaders and others, saying could be implications for the state of Florida regarding who wins this race. Governor DeSantis has talked a lot about saying that if Mamdani wins the race, that there could be a mass exodus of many people from the city of New York, potentially moving to Florida. We had independent political analyst Rich Rabino on Good Day Orlando this morning to talk about watching this race here in Florida.
Well, I think he's always going to be remembered as one of the architects of the, of the US Iraq War. I think that he was somebody who was kind of, was actually kind of hesitant to foreign intervention interventions later, earlier in his political career. Certainly in the first Bush administration, he was one of the people who said that George H.W. Bush should not go in, pass Basra into Iraq and invade the country after the Gulf War. Maybe, maybe the Gulf War is over, we're going to leave. But after 9/11, his views really changed. And I think that some of the, I think that he will always be remembered as the architect of that war. Obviously, the war was based on the premise that there were weapons of mass destruction and that there was some sort of a link between Al Qaeda and Saddam Hussein. Of course, that link was never, would never came to fruition. And then I think from a political standpoint, he's somebody who was an old time conservative who did not fall in line with the Trump Republican Party. Consequently, when Donald Trump ran for reelection, he took an unprecedented step really of endorsing Vice President Harris over Donald Trump. But he'll always be remembered as the architect of the Iraq War.
Yeah, it's going to be interesting to see how he's viewed in a lot of different circles coming up. Want to get back to New York City now. This is, this is a big deal. We've never really seen these kind of policies embraced the way they are. I mean, a self-described socialist. If he wins, what does this do to New York and what does it do to businesses staying in New York? Rich, what are you watching for?
Yeah, it's a great question. And it's, and he's obviously gotten a lot of support with many younger voters, many people of, many, some voters of lower income, some voters of high income as well. But I think that the trepidation and the card of some in New York is that some wealthy people who will not want to, want to pay the increased taxes will want to flee to a state like Florida, Florida state, which does not have an income tax, for example. And I think that Governor DeSantis is certainly welcoming that possibility, if you will. How many people that actually will be, I don't know, but it seems like if you look at the numbers, it's up to 10, 15% of people in New York are saying they're going to flee. Now, are they actually going to flee? We don't know. And how much of his tax proposals are actually going to be in, are going to, are going to go into fruition? We don't really know that either. There are just so many unknown variables. But we have had one democratic socialist in that before, and that was David Dinkins, who served from 1989 to 1994. But he was, he was, he was a little bit, his proposals were a little bit more moderate. So there's really just kind of a lot of wait and see here.
Yeah. And Rich, I got to tell you, I meet two or three people every month that have moved here from New York. I mean, this started during the pandemic. Will it continue? But want to focus on this. Are we making too much of this race? You've got a man that's described as socialist. You've got Cuomo, who is by the President now endorsed, who was forced out of the governor's race. And a Republican that many people haven't heard of. I mean, are we making too much of this? And should it go a certain way? Is, is it a big deal that will be felt throughout New York?
No, I don't think we're making too much of this at all. I think we're making just about, it's the right amount of it. This is a very historic race because the Democratic Party in America has been, we have what's called the catch-all system, meaning we have two political parties and they try to catch all constituencies. Now, a socialist party that's always been socialist in America, there's been a Socialist Party USA, Socialist Workers Party. They never come to the level of socialist parties have in other countries. Usually Democrats do not call themselves socialist, they will use the term progressive. To have somebody actually call themselves a socialist, albeit a democratic socialism, which is certainly a different brand of socialism, is really something that we haven't really seen in America and certainly not in a major city. I think this is going to be a real fight for the heart and soul of the Democratic Party. Is the Democratic Party going to be won by folks like Bernie Sanders, Zohar Mamdani, potentially Elizabeth Warren? Or will it be the more moderate faction of folks like Hakeem Jeffries and Chuck Schumer? And it's very interesting that Chuck Schumer has still not made an endorsement. Chuck Schumer, the most powerful Democrat arguably in the country right now, the Senate Minority Leader. And Hakeem Jeffries, one of the other most powerful Democrats, the House Minority Leader, made a very lukewarm endorsement toward the end of the campaign, partly in fear, I think, that there would be a primary opponent against him if he did not make this endorsement. But it's really an internecine conflict within the Democratic Party. And I think that from a Republican perspective, from a peer poll calculated perspective, they would rather the Democratic Party be a socialist party than a progressive party.
So we will see those results. I believe polls open until 9 o'clock tonight in New York City. So we'll be watching that closely. We know the candidates have been out on the campaign trail again today, even as voters casting their votes today, talking about this and trying to get that last bit of support. It's been something that we've been watching. And we know the President has been weighing in on this. He's been watching this race closely as well. And in fact, he has endorsed Andrew Cuomo, the former governor, and is also, we've seen telling, saying that a vote for the Republican candidate in this race is essentially a vote for Mamdani, who is the, as you heard, the democratic socialist candidate in that race for New York City Mayor. So interesting developments there and we will see kind of how it all shakes out. We know Mamdani has been up in a lot of the polls, but there are signs that the race could be tightening in these, these closing days. We did hear from those candidates earlier today, Mamdani and Cuomo, speaking with reporters. Let me play for you a little bit of that sound as we heard from, this was Mamdani speaking outside one of the precincts in New York City earlier this morning.
Concerned at all about any voter intimidation? There were some issues in New Jersey this morning. New Jersey has bomb threats for voting locations, not here, but the level of concern that backwoods way out here.
It's incredibly concerning. And I think that it is an illustration of the attacks we're seeing in our democracy. Sometimes they're blatant and explicit in the manner of these bomb threats. And we also have to know that here in New York City, I saw a young woman sharing a story of her mother who had voted for our campaign and was then harassed by another man at that poll site for doing so. And we have to understand this as part of the general approach the Trump administration has taken to trying to intimidate voters with baseless allegations of voter fraud as a means of trying to repress the voice of Americans across this country. And when we think about how best to fight Donald Trump, one way we can do so is by understanding Andrew Cuomo for what he is, the candidate endorsed by Donald Trump, Elon Musk and Stephen Miller.
Go ahead.
This has been a local race, but the nation and the world is now watching. And for those who may be curious or concerned about a 34-year-old democratic socialist running the largest city in the country, what would you say to the skip?
Well, I get older every day. I, I think more about New Yorkers than I do about anything beyond our five boroughs. And I look forward to fulfilling the hope that New Yorkers have put in me and to earning the trust of those who voted for another candidate or didn't vote at all. Because my responsibility will be to the entirety of this city. And it'll be to deliver on the agenda that we have spoken of for more than a year, an agenda which will finally bring working class New Yorkers to the heart of our politics, a place that they have not had for quite some time.
Yeah, Michael, go ahead.
I want to ask you about the housing question. You waited until today to weigh in. At the same time, you know there were more than 700,000 people cast their ballots in early voting. And any of these people presumably were looking to take position on this. Can you explain what you're using for your decision and how you're thinking to evolve to get to a place where you can?
You know, I take very seriously the responsibility that I have to share my thoughts with New Yorkers. And I want to always ensure that I do so, having had, actually come to the conclusion. And I took the time to have conversations with stakeholders, policy experts, and wanted to make sure that I was deliberate in the decision that I made. And that's where I've landed.
Zoran, Jeremy Morton was phone banking for you this week.
You think that it is bigger than New York? That your victory can turn the tide, change the conversation for the left in Europe and inside the Democratic Party in the other states?
My, my ambitions are squarely within these five boroughs, my friend. Thank you.
President Trump says he's going to reduce federal funding if you win. What are your thoughts on that?
Sorry, could you say it one more time?
President Trump says he plans to reduce federal funding if you win. What are your thoughts on that?
President Trump also encouraged every New Yorker to vote for Andrew Cuomo. There are many things that he will say and that he will do that will not actually bear out in the results within our own city. I will treat his threats as they deserve to be treated, which are the words of a president and not necessarily the law of the land. And true often, we treat anything that he says by virtue of who's saying it, as if it is already that law. And it is time that we have a mayor who stands up for New Yorkers each and every day, not one who's willing to sacrifice those New Yorkers so that they can stand up for themselves.
Jeremy Morton was phone banking for the Assemblymen. Any last minute message for New Yorkers who may be concerned that the President will follow on his threats if he wins?
I look forward to representing those New Yorkers and look forward to fighting for every single dollar this city is owed. What we see in the language of Donald Trump is a premise as if it is his decision on whether or not to fund a city, the very money that this city is owed. And I look forward to utilizing every single tool at my disposal as the next mayor of this city to fight for the people of it. That means using the courts. That means using the bully pulpit. That means ensuring that we that we actually follow the letter of the law. And I know that doing so is something that threatens Donald Trump. It's why he's gone after Attorney General James, because she had the audacity to hold him to the same law that every New Yorker is held to. But I will not be intimidated by this president. I will not be intimidated by anyone because my job here is to serve the people of this city.
It was Mhamdani speaking earlier today. We also heard just a little bit ago from Andrew Cuomo, the independent candidate in this race. Here is some of what he had to say.
This was a long one, and this was a hard one. You guys have been all over this city, and I know what that's like. And then you have to deal with candidates. It's not always easy. I'm always like, you know, so job well done for you guys. I'm feeling very good. I feel the momentum is on our side. If you watch the polls, they've all been moving towards us. I've been on the street. I feel it from people. I can tell you this, I've heard it a lot of times, first time I ever walked into a polling place and the polling place cheered for me. So that's a good sign. And the record turned out, this is a sign. I do think it's going to be a record. And it's because New Yorkers are concerned. New Yorkers are concerned.
What about Trump and those men?
And so I'm feeling very good about that. And everything I hear from people is good. So we're going to keep working today. It's not over until it's over. Run through the tape. We'll be moving around today. Make sure people get out. It's a beautiful day. Get out and vote. The most important election of my lifetime. And I'm not a kid, but it's the most important election of my lifetime. It's going to determine the future of the city of New York. It may also determine the future of the Democratic Party. So get out and vote. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Mr. Cuomo, the president. Mr. Cuomo, the president. The president just.
How important do you accept it from the president?
The president, the president does not support me. The president opposes Zorron Mhamdani. The president believes Zorron Mhamdani is a communist. He believes he's an existential threat. I believe he's a socialist and an existential threat. And not a dress-up socialist, right? Their school of socialists, the democratic socialists of America, government controls the means of production.
Andrew Cuomo speaking there earlier today, talking about the race for New York City mayor. Again, the polls are open until, I believe, nine o'clock tonight. We'll see those numbers. You've seen, continuing to see folks show up and cast their ballots throughout the day. We're getting ready to take a break here on Fox 35 News Plus. Want to let you know we are standing by for this news conference with the Orlando Fire Department, giving us updates on a house fire in Orlando earlier today. So we will have that for you in just a couple of minutes. We're going to take a break, and we'll be right back after this. Welcome back into Fox 35 News Plus. Garrett Weimer here, and this is a live look in Orlando. Firefighters remain on the scene of a house fire in the area of Paramore and South Street. Six, let's see, 600 block where this happened earlier today, according to investigators. And the Fire Department says firefighters saw this fire while they were driving around the area. So it, it sounds like this might not have been called in, but that firefighters just happened to be driving around that area, saw the fire, a one-story house fire, 600 Block of South Street. They say crews got out and began to work to put out that fire. Also saying they rescued one adult patient who was trapped inside that building. We do expect to hear from firefighters here shortly. And a news conference expected any minute now. And so we will bring that to you live once we get that update here in the next few minutes. Also want to give you a live look right now at the White House Press Briefing Room, where we expect to hear from the White House Press Secretary, speaking any moment now about the, a number of topics. Expect them to talk about the government shutdown. Also, I'm sure will be asked about the Trump, President Trump's Truth Social post earlier today about SNAP benefits that we have discussed. So certainly a lot of topics on the table for that. Meanwhile, we also continue to track the fallout in the aftermath of Hurricane Melissa, which wreaked havoc in a lot of areas, especially on the island of Jamaica, where they have all kinds of damage. We know that the storm is responsible for 60 deaths across several islands. Jamaica is estimated to have $22 billion in damages, and it could take, according to experts, more than 10 years to rebuild a part of that island. But there are relief efforts that are underway. We spoke earlier this week, or I guess that was last week, with Dan Nuland, the Orlando area attorney, who was taking several flights with Grammy Award-winning musical artist Shaggy. And they were going down to that island and helping out. And so Fox 35's Marley Capper actually had the chance to speak with Dan before they took off from those flights, taking a lot of supplies and help to that area. Dan Nuland and Shaggy were on Good Day Orlando this morning to talk about their efforts, how they've been able to help, and what they want people to know. So take a listen, check this out, this interview from Good Day Orlando.
Great work you all have been doing there on the island. Can you give us a little bit of an overview of what you saw when you first landed?
Shaggy. Well, you know, once we got down there, it, you know, we knew we had to get in right away. You know, there's a lot of aid that has been coming through.
We, I think we lost. Dan, I'm going to go ahead and go to you while, while we wait to see if Shaggy can get his, his camera working again. But one of the things I read is that you landed in Kingston, and then it's normally about a two-hour drive to get over to Black River, which is where some of the worst devastation occurred. But it took you guys, what, almost six hours to get there? Is that right?
That, that's correct. About five and a half hours through very treacherous terrain. We were the first people to arrive in that particular area with food and water. And there's, I guess the best way to say is what, what you, what we saw is, you know, you really can't unsee what, what we saw, which was complete devastation, bodies that had not been recovered. And, but it was, but it was a great feeling to see people really just, you know, waiting in line for a bottle of water, for our U-Haul truck to give out diapers, to give out t-shirts, clean clothes. And so, you know, I congratulate my friend Shaggy, who's back with us, because he really led the way in this particular mission down to that particular area.
And we know, Shaggy, that you are from Jamaica. And so when you go there and you see the devastation on that island, but you also know the resilience of the Jamaican people, what goes through your mind?
Absolutely. When we got there and we were, you know, giving out some of the stuff, you know, it took me around three and a half hours just to get to a place that normally would take, you know, two hours or two and a half hours. And we got there in the middle of the night. You know, by that time, we couldn't, we had to chop our way through all of the, you know, just, the roads were all messed up. And once we pulled up, you know, they just forming a line, man. They didn't, you didn't have to tell them. That's how, even though they're going through these rough times, you know, there were still smiles, they were still there. You know, it's very resilient people. We're going to, we're going to, we're going to make it through this. And, you know, what we're just trying to do on ORPA with Dan, we're going to continue to, you know, spread the word, keep it out there. Because the more, you know, we keep it in the press, the more the aid continues, you know? And, and that's one of our missions.
Shaggy, I'm glad you brought that up, because I think that is one of the most difficult things about any natural disaster, is that there's so much attention focused on it at the time that it happens. And then it slowly, you know, other headlines creep their way into the news, and people forget. So both of you have done such a great job of making sure that, you know, these things stay relevant and out there. Dan, talk to me a little bit about some of your efforts as far as not just Jamaica, but other places where you work to continue to keep these stories alive.
Sure. All that, I see some B-roll going through. All of those supplies are supplies that Shaggy and I brought down that you're seeing on TV right there. That was really the first load that came in. But we've both been, I mean, Shaggy's obviously connected to Jamaica in a different way than I am, but he got me connected. We've been doing work with the hospitals there for a number of years now, cardiac kids, doing emergency surgeries, all of these types of things. So my heart is really with Jamaican people. We've been in contact with physicians, doctors who go down to volunteer. So we're just going to keep, I was just talking to Shaggy this morning. I go, how many more trips are we going to make before Christmas? And we'd like to make three to five more trips down to Jamaica. And really with the holidays here, how important it is to continue the spirit, the hope for the people. So hopefully, we'll be able to do something with you guys, that we do a nice big toy drive, and we'll take, and take all that cargo down and make it like a Fox 35, a toy drive for Jamaica, maybe. We could do something like that.
Oh, something like that would be wonderful. And Shaggy, before we let you go, I want to ask, you know, again, this being your, your home island, and you know there's going to be an ongoing need for not just months, but many years to come. How can other people get involved to help if they want to?
Well, the main thing you could do, you could hit any of these, these donation sites. You know, one of the greatest things you could do is probably go to Global Empowerment Mission. Those are some of the guys that we work with. I know they're definitely, they have boots on the ground, you know? And of course, Food for the Poor, it's been a longtime charity, it's been sixth-largest charity in the United States, and it's, it's a Jamaican charity also. They build houses in Haiti, and, and I've worked with them for years also. Of course, the Shaggy Make a Difference Foundation is also, the supportjamaica.gov.jm. That's the government site that is also set up. So there are many ways that you could go in there and, and get it. But the main, main thing that I can stress more to everyone, to try and keep it in your social media and keep it, you know, repost, go onto my site, my, my Instagram, I'm always putting footage up. Go ahead and, and repost, 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 repost. And just to keep the word there, because we, we need, we don't want it to be forgotten really quickly.
Absolutely. I have to ask, how did you two become connected in the beginning?
I was thinking the same thing, the exact same thing.
How did you become friends?
You know what it is? You know, I played for Dan's, I think it was a Christmas party that he had for, for the Dan Nuland Law Firm. And once we got there, we played, we had a conversation. I realized that he had done a lot of humanitarian things. And we just connected, because I've always been in that, I have the Shaggy Make a Difference Foundation that I've been doing for probably around 19 years. You know, I do concerts there. I support the Buster Man, the Hospital for Children, which Dan has also sent down missions there also for surgeries, cardiac surgeries for kids. And Chain of Hope is also another organization that I work with. And I've been doing it for years, but years. I do concerts in Jamaica with Shaggy and friends. Last one I did was with Sting. We, we made over a million dollars that night. So him and I are just kind of kindred spirit in a way that we connect on a human level, you know? And so when things like this happen, it's, it's not just us doing great things, but we also enjoy doing it because we have this connection and this friendship.
We're going to take a break here on Fox 35 News Plus, and we'll be right back. Welcome back into Fox 35 News Plus. Give you a live look along South Street in Paramore, where we're expecting an update from the Orlando Fire Department any minute now, giving an update on an Orlando house fire. So we are waiting for some new details there. We don't know much. We do know that one person was apparently trapped inside the home and rescued by firefighters. So we will bring you that news conference live when it does begin. Right now, White House Press Secretary Caroline Leavitt is speaking to reporters at the White House. Let's listen in as she briefs amid the, what is likely going to be the longest government shutdown in history.
Ever before have we had a president who has kept their promises like President Trump has? I'd like to go over a few of those with you. In less than 10 short months, President Trump signed the largest middle-class tax cut in history, including no tax on tips, overtime, and social security to put more money back into the pockets of the American people. The president ended the southern border invasion of the Biden administration, made our border the most secure in history, and he is carrying out the largest mass deportation campaign of illegal aliens in our nation's history to protect our homeland, just as promised. President Trump has aggressively taken on drug cartels by declaring them as foreign terrorist organizations, and even blowing up narco-terrorists who have tried to poison the American people with fentanyl and other illegal narcotics. President Trump defeated the Biden inflation crisis, and he continues to implement a pro-growth, America-first economic agenda to make America affordable again. And we are seeing the results of that every day. Inflation has remained low and steady, averaging just 2.5% compared to the painful average of 5% under Biden. And we know it was historically higher than that for most of President Biden's term. Meanwhile, real private sector wages are on track to rise by almost $1,500 since President Trump took office, a significant change to the Biden years where private sector wages declined and were being wiped out by inflation. President Trump has ended the reckless war on American energy and unleashed energy dominance with gas prices now plummeting to their lowest average levels in more than with gas prices now plummeting to their lowest average levels in more than four years. President Trump implemented powerful tariffs to rebalance America's trade deals, protect American workers, and-
We're gonna get you live now to Orlando where we are getting ready to hear an update from the Orlando Fire Department about this house fire where someone had to be rescued after being trapped inside the home. We don't really have a whole lot of details other than that. It appears that Orlando firefighters driving by that fire are the ones who spotted it. So let's go ahead and listen in as we get this update together on a house fire on South Street in Paramore.
Everybody ready? I'm good. Yeah. Ready? Yep. Start today, yes, fellas, first last name and title, please, sir. Good afternoon. My name is Rafael Ferreira, that's R-A-P-H-A-E-L, last name F-E-R-R-E-I-R-A. I'm the district chief with the City of Orlando Fire Department downtown. At approximately 12 o'clock, one of our fire trucks, they rolled up on a duplex with heavy smoke showing. They called for a full alarm to respond to a structure fire. There was reports of a trapped occupant in the rear of the structure. Our units were able to remove the trapped occupant. There was a total of five people displaced from both occupancies. Within minutes, the City of Orlando Fire Department had 12 emergency units on scene with 35 combat firefighters quickly extinguishing the flames. This was a duplex with a deep-seated fire, so it took a little longer than usual, but the, the heavy contents inside the structure posed some challenges, but they were able to put out the fire with no further complications. As I said, there was five people displaced, their property manager is finding accommodations for them for the evening while they wait for repairs.
What would you say, duplex, is this a story or just one story with two units?
It's a single story, split into two units, with a front unit and one in the rear.
Can you tell where the fire started?
So they're still investigating, the, the fire actually spread throughout the structure, so they're trying to pinpoint the exact point of origin. The investigation's ongoing.
I saw a hole in the roof, is, how did that, do we know how that occurred?
What was that?
I saw a hole in the roof, do we know how that occurred? I saw a hole in the roof that cut the, of the structure.
That's under investigation as well.
What should, talk a little bit more about the response time, I mean, did that truck, did this, so happened to be in the area that you guys called?
Yeah, so our first unit was our tower company number one, they had just cleared another emergency unit. They were around the area of the 408 I-4 interchange, and they saw smoke from the distance. So they responded in this general direction, and as soon as they confirmed it, they called for all the remaining units. So they were on scene immediately, and within, within five minutes, the second, third unit started arriving, and all units were on scene in under 10 minutes.
How critical was it, just the time of their arrival? How much, how could this have been different?
Well, the one trapped occupant, he, he was in a bad situation. He was unable to get out by himself, and he was completely engulfed in the smoke. So Tower Company One being on scene that quickly, I say definitely made a difference in the outcome of this call.
Were there any animals?
There are reports of three cats. They seem to have vacated the structure on their own accord.
Thank you, thank you, chief.
Thank you all.
District Chief Rafael Ferreira speaking there, giving an update on this house fire on South Street. We learned that one person was trapped inside that building, but was rescued, five people now without a place to stay, we're told the property manager's making arrangements for them. But the firefighters say they rolled up on the duplex there on South Street, found it with heavy smoke and a fire that they said did pose some challenges with putting out, but they were able to put out that fire. So that was a live update from the Orlando District Fire Chief downtown, speaking about that fire on South Street. We're going to take another quick break here on Fox 35 News Plus, but we'll be right back after this.
You're watching Fox 35 News Plus, streaming on Fox Local.
Welcome back into Fox 35 News Plus, White House Press Secretary Caroline Levitt speaking right now to reporters at the White House. Let's go ahead and listen in.
Is that contingency fund for the future if this shutdown lingers on?
Look, the president does not want to have to continue to dip into a contingency fund that doesn't even have enough money, by the way, to fund the full program. It takes $9 billion to get the full scale of the benefits out the door. This contingency fund only has about $5 billion in it. So again, Democrats need to reopen the government so we can get these benefits out the door for people who truly need them. Kate?
The president suggested that if Don Danni wins, that he would cut federal funding to New York. How much funding would be impacted, what would be impacted there?
Well, look, we won't get ahead of the election results, nor will I speak to what the president may do in the future. We'll see how tonight goes, and then I'll let him speak on it further.
And why did the administration exclude Democratic lawmakers? Last week, there was a briefing about U.S. strikes on alleged drug trafficking boats. Why were those Democrats excluded?
The administration has briefed Congress on these matters eight separate times, and Democrats have been included in those briefings. In fact, I know that Secretary Rubio will be on Capitol Hill tomorrow to brief the gang of 12, which includes Democrats as well. So the president's made it very clear, if senators want to understand the administration's operations against narco drug traffickers, we are very happy to speak with them about that, and we will continue to do so. But we've been incredibly transparent. As I said, there's been eight briefings on this topic, with the ninth coming tomorrow. Rachel.
Thanks, Caroline. There's been some reporting out there about the possibility of furlough workers not getting back pay. We know that the president signed that bill into law in his first term. Does the administration guarantee that all furlough workers will get back pay?
This is something we are very much open to discussing with Democrats as part of the discussions about the continuing resolution to keep the government open, and it's something that Republicans are talking with Democrats about right now. I won't get ahead of those negotiations or discussions.
So open to discussion, that's a possibility that that may not happen, even though it's law?
I just said, Republicans in the White House are very much open to discussing this with Democrats.
And just one last question, as this government shutdown now drags on, about to make history as the longest government shutdown in American history, can you talk about what the president is personally doing to try to see an end to this?
He's pushing Republicans to keep voting and to keep opening up the Senate floor to vote for the clean continuing resolution. He had the Senate Majority Leader and the House Caucus Leader, Hakeem Jeffries, here at the White House to talk about this in the very early stages, to give them a chance to come to their senses and avoid this entire government shutdown at the very beginning, and they chose not to. And I think it's been very clear to everyone in this room and to everyone across the country that the Democrats are playing partisan politics with our United States federal government. And all Republicans have wanted to do for the last 35 days is reopen the government. That has been the president's position since day one, it is his position today on day 35. And all we need are five common sense Democrats with, have a little bit of courage and come to the table and vote with Republicans. I saw Senator John Fetterman on television last night saying that he hopes more folks in his party will step up, and we certainly agree with him on that point.
Sure.
Caroline, the president posted on Truth Social that the voting underway in California is quote rigged. What evidence does he have of that, and what does it mean that mail-in ballots in that state are under legal and criminal review? By whom and why? And also, in this vein, does the White House still plan to issue an executive order banning mail-in voting, and what legal authority do you have to do that?
The White House is working on an executive order to strengthen our elections in this country and to ensure that there cannot be blatant fraud, as we've seen in California with their universal mail-in voting system. It's absolutely true that there are fraud in Cal, there's fraud in California's elections. It's just a fact.
What's the evidence about that?
It is just a fact. They have a universal mail-in voting system, which we know is ripe for fraud. And if you want to deny that, I'm happy to provide you all of the evidence for it. I'd be glad to send that to you after this briefing.
Is it rigged?
Fraudulent ballots that are being mailed in, in the names of other people, in the names of illegal aliens who shouldn't be voting in American elections. There's countless examples, and we'd be happy to provide them. As for executive action the White House is taking, yes, we are looking into that. And like any executive order, of course, any executive order the president signs is within his full executive authority and within the confines of the law. Stephen?
Thank you, Caroline. I've got two questions I'd like to ask you about New York, but first, I'd like to ask you about breaking news from the Attorney General. She revealed just about an hour ago that the justice, the Biden Justice Department seized President Trump's official first-term phone and subpoenaed his private phone records. Do you have a reaction to that, and also, do we know if they actually got those private call records?
I saw the Attorney General's post on that. For additional questions, I would refer you to the Department of Justice, but I think this is just further evidence of the egregious overreach and weaponization of government that took place under the previous White House against then-former President and now President Donald J. Trump. It was a clear effort by the Biden White House and the Biden DOJ to go after the president, and this is just further evidence of that.
On New York, we've seen the president's messages that he's put out, but can you describe how he's feeling as a New Yorker watching this election?
Well, the president is a New Yorker, and he loves New York. It is his home, he talks about that all of the time, and he's made his thoughts on this election quite clear, I think, himself. In the back, yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Over the weekend, there were reports-
I was going to you in the green, but go ahead, and then you can have your question.
Thank you. Over the, over the weekend, there were reports that President Trump was due to host, President of Syria, Ahmadine Sadr, on Monday. Do you have any preview for that meeting? Is he expected to invite him to join the U.S.-led anti-ISIS coalition?
I can confirm that that meeting will be taking place here at the White House on Monday, and this is part of the president's efforts in diplomacy to meet with anyone around the world in the pursuit of peace. And as you know, when the president was in the Middle East, he made the historic decision to lift sanctions on Syria to give them a real chance at peace. And I think the administration, we've seen good progress on that front under their new leadership. And so he will be here at the White House on Monday, and I'll let the president speak further on it on Monday. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Caroline. I was just curious, you had mentioned there that President Trump, as we know, has been speaking with Republican leaders in Congress about reopening the government. Is he involved in any other negotiations? Is he prepared to sign something if a deal does come out by the end of this week? On top of that, with SNAP benefits, does he have any authorities or considering any authority there to release more funds to help people who are desperately needing these benefits?
So look, I think I've already answered the question on SNAP. We're complying with the court's order, and we're getting that partial payment out the door as much as we can and as quickly as we can, but it's going to take some time because, again, we're, this is a prorated payment that we're tapping into a contingency fund for, the best way to get those payments out the doors for Democrats to reopen the government. But yes, the president is in constant communication with his friends on Capitol Hill. They know, they call, he answers, he picks up the phone, that's, he's a very transparent president in that way. And as soon as the Democrats pass the clean continuing resolution, President Trump will be here to sign it. Michael?
Thank you, Caroline. President Trump has threatened to go into Nigeria guns blazing if Nigeria's government does not stop the killing of Christians in that country. Has the White House heard back from Nigeria's government on this threat?
As the president stated, Michael, if the Nigerian government continues to allow the killing of Christians, the United States will immediately stop all aid and assistance to Nigeria and may take action to wipe out the Islamic terrorists who are committing these horrible atrocities, especially against innocent women and children. I don't have any further announcements on that for you today, but I can assure you, the President of the United States is watching this situation unfold very closely, as is our Secretary of State Marco Rubio.
One more question, Caroline. President Trump has endorsed Andrew Cuomo in New York City's mayoral race. He has not by name endorsed Winsome Sears in Virginia's gubernatorial race. Why is that?
Look, as you know from this podium, I'm quite limited in what I can say with regards to ongoing political elections. I think the president has spoken for himself in what he wants to see take place in these elections today. Lalee?
Thank you. I would like to ask you about India-US relationship. What is president's thoughts on the future of India-US relationship?
I'm sorry, Lalee, can you repeat that?
What is president's thoughts on future of India-US relationship?
I think he feels very positive and strongly about it. As you know, he recently, a few weeks back, spoke to Prime Minister directly when he celebrated in the Oval Office Diwali with many high-ranking Indian-American officials here at the White House. We have a great U.S. ambassador to India in Mr. Sergio Gómez, who will represent our country very well. And the president and his trade team continue to be in very serious discussions with India with respect to that topic. So I know the president has great respect for Prime Minister Modi, and they speak pretty frequently. Thank you.
Hi, yes. On the air traffic controller crisis ongoing, Secretary Duffy said he will now start to cancel en-ground flights next week to maintain safety. Should people fly next week, given this new information, and is the administration encouraging people to stop flying altogether and look at alternative transportation modes?
The administration is encouraging Democrats to reopen the federal government so this chaos and disruption to our air traffic control system in the United States of America stops. It is ridiculous that we have even gotten to this place and that the Democrats have continued to shut down the government with 35 days, our air traffic controllers continuing to work unpaid, every single major airline in our country coming out and begging the Democrats to please reopen the government. And you had a Democrat staffer who was quoted, I believe in Politico a few weeks back, saying, "Short of planes falling out of the sky, we are not going to reopen the government." That is a reckless and dangerous statement from someone who didn't want to put their name on that statement, but we know it came from the Democrat Party. And I think we're very clear, we want to reopen the government so we can resume travel in the safest and most efficient way possible, especially as we head into the busiest travel season of the month. We have Thanksgiving in a few weeks, and so Americans across the country need to make it very clear to their Democrat representatives that we want this government to be reopened so we can resume safe and efficient travel. Fran?
Thanks, Caroline. As of last I checked, the president still had not commented on the death of former Vice President Dick Cheney. Is the White House involved in funeral arrangements in any way? Does the president plan to speak at the funeral? Has he spoken to anyone in the Cheney family today? And does the White House have an opinion on whether or not the former Vice President should lie in honor or stay in the Capitol?
I don't believe the White House is involved in that planning, or at least haven't, hasn't gotten to it yet. I know the president is aware of the former Vice President's passing, and as you saw, flags have been lowered to half-staff in accordance with statutory law. Jasmine?
Thank you. Back on the question of the filibuster, how much political capital is President Trump willing to expend to get Republicans to do what he's asking? I mean, will we see him at the Hill? Will he be calling folks over here? What exactly is President Trump planning to do outside of these Truth Socia's and maybe some of these private conversations to get Republicans to fall in line?
Look, I think you'll see. I think you'll see the president continue to engage very strongly and consistently with his friends on Capitol Hill. I don't have any meetings to read out for you at this time, but I think you should stay tuned and keep your eyes on Truth Social on this matter. The president's making his position on it quite clear. And again, he is right, Republicans need to play tough. We know that this is what the Democrats will do if they are ever given the keys to power again. And he wants to pass as many good pieces of legislation as we possibly can for our country and for our people. That includes election integrity reforms, it includes additional tax policy, it includes, you know, fixing our immigration system further in ways that only Congress can, and the president fears with- And the president fears with a Democrat Party that is so radical and opposes everything he does and everything he says, this is the only option for Republicans to move forward. Karen.
Sorry, in a second question. President Trump said to CBS in the 60 Minutes interview that he did not know the Binance founder, which he pardoned. What exactly did he mean for that? I know it caused--
He means he does not know him personally. He means he does not have a personal relationship with this individual. And when it comes to pardons, the White House takes them with the utmost seriousness, and the president understands the responsibility that he has as president to issue clemency and issue pardons to individuals who are seeking that. That's why we have a very thorough review process here that moves with the Department of Justice and the White House Counsel's Office. There's a whole team of qualified lawyers who look at every single pardon request that ultimately make their way up to the President of the United States. He's the ultimate final decision maker. And he was very clear when he came into office that he was most interested in looking at pardoning individuals who were abused and used by the Biden Department of Justice and were over prosecuted by a weaponized DOJ. And the individual you're referring to, that was certainly the case. Even the judge in his case said that the sentencing that the Biden administration was asking for was egregious and went too far. And so the president is correcting that wrong, and he has officially ended the Biden administration's war on the cryptocurrency industry. And I think that's the message he sent with this pardon. Karen, yes.
Back on the issue of back pay for furloughed workers, you said that the White House is open to discussing that with Democrats, but what would that discussion even be? There was a law the president signed in 2019. What could a discussion look like? Why is that even open for discussion?
Look, Karen, as I said, Republicans are talking about that with Democrats right now, and I don't want to get in the middle of those sensitive conversations. But as we've complied with the SNAP order, the White House, the administration is always going to comply with the laws. We're always going to comply with the ruling of judges across the country. But the Republicans are discussing this matter with Democrats right now.
Why would there even be a consideration of not paying those workers?
Times News Nation, big day in the Supreme Court tomorrow if President Trump's tariff policy faces a legal challenge. What's at stake with that case? And if the Supreme Court were against the Trump administration, what is Plan B for trade policy?
I'll tell you, the White House is always preparing for Plan B. It would be imprudent of the president's advisers not to prepare for such a situation. With that said, we are 100% confident in the president and his team's legal argument and the merits of the law in this case. And we remain optimistic that the Supreme Court is going to do the right thing. The importance of this case cannot be overstated. The president must have the emergency authority to utilize tariffs. Look at what President Trump has been able to do with the leverage and the power of tariffs. He's been able to sign peace deals all over the world and end global conflicts and literally save lives. He's been able to bring in trillions of dollars of investments into our country. In fact, this year alone, we are going to cut the deficit by $600 billion, namely because of the president's effective use of tariffs. And the president strongly believes that economic security is a matter of national security, and tariffs have a lot to do with that. And this this case is not just about President Trump. It's about the the use of this emergency authorization for tariffs for future presidents and administrations to come. And we're confident and hopeful that the Supreme Court will do the right thing. Kristen.
Why did President Trump get an MRI during his recent physical read?
Look, as President Trump said, he would inquire with the physicians. I'll check back on that. But as the physical itself stated, Kristen, and as you all know, because you are all witness to it, every single day, the president is in optimal physical health. This was a follow-up appointment, and we provided a detailed readout of that physical. I'm happy to give it to you again, and I can inquire further.
With all due respect, an MRI is a very specific procedure. It's done on a part of the body, looking for something specific. So it's not generally part of any kind of routine checkup. And in addition, President Trump has said that he wants to be transparent. He has told us to ask the doctors, which we have and have not heard back. Why don't we have more information on this?
As I said, I'll check back for you. Go ahead.
John, can you update us on the mediation efforts the administration is leading in Sudan, trying to achieve a ceasefire there?
Sure, yes. The United States is actively engaged in efforts to bring about a peaceful resolution to the terrible conflict in Sudan. We remain committed to working with our international partners, including Quad members, Egypt, Saudi Arabia, the UAE, as well as others, to lead a negotiated peace process that addresses both the immediate humanitarian crisis and the longer-term political challenges. I actually spoke with Secretary Rubio about this this morning, as of course, there's been, you know, kind of an uptick in recent reporting on the matter. And he assured me that the administration is very much engaged. We're in pretty frequent communication with those Arab partners that I just mentioned, and we want to see this conflict come to a peaceful end, just as we have with so many others. But it's the reality is it's a very complicated situation on the ground right now. Yes.
Hi, yes. Just trying to go back into the subject of Mexico. Is the Trump administration planning to send US troops to Mexico to combat drug cartels, as reported by other outlets?
That's not something I would confirm from this podium if it were happening. So I will not comment on that. Even--
Thank you, Caroline. Why did the president decide not to go to the Supreme Court tomorrow? He'd indicated earlier that he might want to go and attend in person. Now he's saying he's not going to.
The president did have an interest in attending the Supreme Court hearing tomorrow, as I just expressed how important it is to him, the administration, and the country, this case. But he is traveling to Miami tomorrow, as you all know, to give an economic address with the mayor of Miami and many global business leaders to talk about his historic success with the economy over the past 10 months and talk about sort of where we are headed as a country in terms of our economy. So he'll be traveling tomorrow on the road in Miami. That's why he won't be here. But Secretary Scott Besant will be in attendance at the hearing tomorrow at the request of the president.
He has said that he doesn't want to export the high-end Nvidia chips to China. But the Wall Street Journal reported yesterday that there was some question about whether the president would raise this as a possible concession with the Chinese side during his meeting with Xi Jinping. So does the White House consider Nvidia chip exports to China to be a closed issue right now, or is this an ongoing negotiation between the United States, China, and Nvidia at this point?
The president has made his position on this very clear, both to the Chinese and also to all of you. He's answered this question directly. As for the most advanced chips, the Blackwell chip, that's not something we're interested in selling to China at this time. Annie.
Does the president think that the results of the Virginia or New Jersey primary races tomorrow or statewide races tomorrow will in any way reflect a better sentiment towards his administration?
Look, Annie, I'm not at liberty to talk about the election results, and I certainly won't get ahead of them. I'm not going to engage in hypotheticals that may or may not happen tonight. We'll have to watch and see. And I'm sure you'll hear directly from the president tomorrow on that point.
Can I quickly unstop this really quickly? Is there anything that prompted the president's tweet this morning? Because it did seem, you know, quite different from some of his other communications about SNAP. It seemed a little bit out of the left field. I'm just wondering if he had a conversation or if there's anything you're aware of that caused him to decide to at around 11 o'clock to send out that message?
Look, the president is constantly well-read on the news, as you know, and he is very much aware. We are in day 35 of a government shutdown in which these SNAP benefits, we're pushing them out the door. USDA put out that guidance to the states this morning. The president was aware of that, and he wants to make it very clear that these benefits are in jeopardy because of the Democrats, and they should just open the government so that we can continue getting these funds out the door in an easier and more efficient way.
Just there's something in your reporting that just dropped a few minutes ago that the Trump administration is negotiating with the makers of Ozempic to sell some weight loss drugs for $149 a month. That's according to the Wall Street Journal. Do you have any more information on that? Can you confirm that?
I think the president has said himself in previous Most Favored Nations announcements that this is something that the administration has been engaged in and looking into. I won't get ahead of the president on any future announcements, but I will echo his strong commitment to bringing down drug prices in this country. And you've heard it directly from Secretary Kennedy and Dr. Marty Makary and his entire Health and Human Services team, how committed the president is to bringing down the cost of drugs, and we're working with pharmaceutical companies to do that every day.
Very quickly, Caroline, on SNAP.
That is White House Press Secretary Caroline Levitt, who has been answering questions from reporters and talking right there at the end there about just ask another question about the SNAP benefits with the president's Truth Social post earlier today. It does appear, as she said, they will, they are complying with the court's order for to paying out those half of the benefits for the month of November. We are getting ready for Florida Live here on Fox Local, so we're going to take a quick break here on Fox 35 News Plus. We will be back at the top of the hour. We'll welcome in our TV audience and talk a lot more news and sports. So we hope you stay with us. Keep it here on Fox Local, and we'll be right back.
Florida Live starts now.
Well, good afternoon to you and welcome into Florida Live. I'm Garrett Weimer and thanks for joining us on this Tuesday afternoon, live on Fox Local, YouTube and on Fox 35 TV. It has been a busy day. We've been streaming for the last three hours. We've got one more hour left and we appreciate you joining us today. It is day 35 of the government shutdown, going to be the longest government shutdown in history after a 14th failed vote on the Senate floor earlier today. We were looking in live on that on Fox 35 News Plus. And again, that vote failed was the 14th time that a test vote has been done to try to advance the clean CR, the funding bill from the House that passed about 46 days ago or so, but has now failed the Senate once again and continuing the government shutdown and leaving in limbo a lot of families who receive SNAP benefits. We know those benefits expired over the weekend. A court, a federal court requiring the Trump administration to pay out half, to pay out those benefits. The Trump administration saying yesterday they would pay out half of those for the month of November. President Trump saying in a Truth Social post today that SNAP benefits are essentially, it's not going to be a full thing until the government shutdown has ended. That is the stance. We just heard from Caroline Levitt talking about that in the White House press briefing. But that leaves a lot of families in our area in need and looking at ways to put food on the table, struggling potentially to make ends meet because of the help they normally get from those SNAP benefits. And so we're seeing a number of organizations, agencies kind of team up and look at ways to help neighbors in their community. And one of the people we heard from earlier today was Volusia County Sheriff Mike Chitwood, who announced a large food drive this weekend in Volusia County to help folks. And Fox 35's Chris Lindsay spoke with the sheriff about this. He joins us live now via Zoom. And Chris, it was, I think the sheriff said, what, 39,000 households in Volusia County receive SNAP benefits? And that's a lot of families with, that are kind of in limbo right now.
And that's exactly why this weekend they'll be doing whatever they can to get as much food to those people who need it the most. So they'll be joining the Daytona Beach Police as well as the Jewish Federation for Volusian Flagler Counties here in Daytona Beach at the Speedway. On Saturday, they'll be collecting food. They're asking anyone to make donations, to come by, drop their food off. And then on Sunday, people will be able to collect that food. So right now, this is planned as a one-time thing in direct response to the stoppage of SNAP benefits, which as you mentioned, impacts a lot of people. So they'll be doing this and asking anyone to come out and drop off some food and if you're in need to pick it up.
Yeah, they talked about kind of the, some of the logistics of this. It sounds like it's a big operation that's going to be going on at Daytona International Speedway. So what is the message to folks who might be able to pitch in and help?
So you're asked to reach out to these various departments, Volusia County Sheriff's Office, or the Jewish Federation for Volusian Flagler, if you'd like to volunteer. In the meantime, they're also reaching out to college campuses, to religious organizations, et cetera, to see who wants to volunteer. But this is supposed to be a big operation. They're working with local box stores, Trader Joe's, Walmart, trying to get as many items, as many food options for people as they possibly can. The logistics of this, when you come through, they still are verifying. So any qualifications you need to meet to get those SNAP benefits, you have to show that identification. This won't qualify for things like alcohol or tobacco and things of those nature. They'll also be giving out gift cards for things like that.
And the need here is not theoretical. We heard from the Jewish Federation saying that one of the food pantries with the food banks, they said last week before SNAP benefits, you know, kind of fully ran out there, they saw, they doubled their first time clients. So this is something that, that people were kind of gearing up for, knowing they were going to potentially be in trouble if, if these benefits ran out.
Certainly. And one of the points that they really nailed home is that about half of Volusia County residents, if they were to experience some sort of emergency or if they skip a paycheck or two, that they would be in a life-changing situation. So they really want to provide as many resources as they can while this government shutdown is going on. At least these people won't have to worry about the food aspect of things. So this is supposed to be a massive drive. The sheriff pointed out, you mentioned 39,000 households or so, they won't be able to accommodate that many people, but they're going to accommodate as many people as they can. They've also spent thousands of dollars on those gift cards that I mentioned to hand out so that people can purchase food on their own if they aren't able to receive the, the physical food here at the Speedway this weekend.
All right. Fox 35's Chris Lindsay, we appreciate you joining us and bringing us that update here on Florida Live.
Thank you.
And just to show you, we do have a graphic that shows all of those details that Chris was talking about. Give me one second to pull that up for you here. Again, if you can help out, they're asking volunteers to show up in the morning. Again, you can sign up to help by emailing the Volusia County Sheriff's Office, as Chris just talked about with us. So there's all those details. This is a graphic from social media, the Volusia County Sheriff's Office. Meanwhile, we also heard from Volusia County Sheriff Mike Chitwood today, talking about the arrest of a former Volusia County Sheriff's Deputy who is facing charges now in connection with an alleged check kiting scheme. So investigators say that, that this former deputy, Douglas Meyer, was writing checks and essentially taking advantage of the time it took for those checks to clear and accessing the funds, writing these checks from one credit union to the other, writing those checks for himself, according to the allegations against him. And Sheriff Chitwood, in no uncertain terms today, talked about this case and his vow that this suspect will not work in law enforcement again, and also vowing to melt down his badge.
Apparently what he does is, he writes a check on an account that doesn't have the sufficient funds in it. And then he goes to another credit union to cash it, which is check kiting. So he appears at that check at the credit union in uniform. I think he's wanting to intimidate the bank that, hey, I'm a sheriff's deputy. You don't have to put a hold on this second verify I have the funds, just give me the funds. So he got 5,000 out of it. Well, he could have cost the credit union around 50 grand with, with the checks he was writing. He then resigns, like a month before the credit union calls our HR department, says, hey, I'm going to ask you a question. Is this guy working for you? We got this issue with these checks he's been issuing. And then HR notifies the command staff, then we open up an IA, and then clearly when the check in, you should know exactly what this is. This is fraud or check kiting, because you can't write a check and hope that someday I put the money back into the account. It's not like you write a check and they bunch you back for insufficient funds. He didn't have any funds to begin with that he was writing that check on. So he was charged with a felony, scheming to defraud. You know, he was already left the organization. So we're going to burn his badge tomorrow. It's going to be melted down. And we'll notify the Florida Department of Law Enforcement to make sure his ticket is pulled, his law enforcement license, that he can never be a cop again anywhere in the country. Now, all that remains to be seen.
Do you think that perhaps he was tipped off in some way that resulted in his resignation? Or were there some other things that could have?
I think he was tipped off. He knew it was coming. You know, he worked for us from 20 to 24. And then he left to go to work for the county for a better paying job. That when he got there, he realized that the green, the grass wasn't greener. And he begged to come back. And I let him come back. He wasn't back that long, maybe a year before he resigned again. This time he resigned, he was complaining about supervision. The real reason is, he knew that this was going to come down, that he had cut those bad checks and he knew he was going to get locked up.
You always have a same stance when it comes to deputies and ex-deputies committing crimes in general. Could you just reiterate your answer?
Yeah, we're not going to tolerate it. I mean, you know, in our line of work, there's two mistakes. There's a mistake of the head and there's a mistake of the heart. Mistake of the heart, you're fatal. You know what you're doing is illegal and you're going to do it anyway. And that's what he did. Mistake of the head is a different thing. You know, you come to work, you try to do the right thing, you step out of your car and man, you step into it. And for whatever reason, not enough information, you make a bad decision. Now, you're going to get hammered for that, but you shouldn't lose your career in most cases. But mistakes of the heart, man, you know exactly what you're doing. You know what the law is and you opted to violate the law and violate your oath of office and give us a black eye and yourself a black eye. So now in turn, we're going to hold you up, we're going to destroy your badge so nobody can ever wear that again.
No question, he knew exactly what he was doing.
How could you not? I mean, I know what's in my checking account. I know that I can't write a $7,000 check when I have $5 in my checking account. You know, it's not like you know, okay, I'm getting paid on Thursday, I'm going to mail the check on Monday, and I'll be able to cover my mortgage, which I think most people at some point in time do. This was, you had no way that you had those funds. You knew that. You were trying to get money to impress a, whatever you're trying to do, you knew you didn't do that. And that's fraud.
All of that ruined for a few thousand dollars.
For $2,000.
Serious allegations against that ex-deputy, that was Volusia County Sheriff Mike Chitwood weighing in on that. We're going to take a quick break here on Fox 35 News Plus, but we'll be right back after this. Welcome back into Florida Live. I'm Garrett Weimer and thanks for joining us on this Tuesday afternoon, live on Fox Local, YouTube and on Fox 35 TV. It is time now for our Tampa Connection, where we take a look at some of the big stories happening in the Bay Area. And for that, we go to Fox 13 Tampa Bay, Senior Content Producer Nancy Gay, joining us live from the Fox 13 newsroom. And Nancy, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Garrett. We're going to begin today with an update to the story involving the horrific murder of a missing Gulfport teenager. Now, yesterday, a federal judge agreed with Grindr that a lawsuit filed over the teen's murder by a man she met on the platform should go to arbitration. Now, investigators said 16-year-old Miranda Corset met Steven Gress on the app in February, and he introduced her to his domestic partner, Michelle Brandis. Investigators say there was some type of a dispute over a missing piece of jewelry. And investigators said that Gress and Brandis severely beat Corset for several days before killing her, dismembering her, and then disposing of her in a dumpster. Gress and Brandis have both been charged with first degree murder and their trials are pending. Now, the teen's estate filed a wrongful death lawsuit against Grindr, seeking to hold it responsible in the murder. But Grindr argued that the dispute should go to arbitration rather than to trial in court. However, the estate's attorneys objected to arbitration, raising a series of arguments, including that the victim was a minor. However, U.S. District Judge Tom Barber said that that argument and others, including that the arbitration provision of the terms and conditions was unconscionable. In part, he wrote, "It is important to recognize that Corset created at least three Grindr accounts. Thus, she had the opportunity to review the arbitration agreement at least three times. A failure to comprehend or negotiate arbitration or unequal bargaining power does not justify a repeated refusal to read an argument and should not negate the enforceability of an arbitration agreement." Garrett?
All right. That's a story that I know y'all have been following closely there, ever since that, that teenager was reported missing. Interesting to see these, these new developments as an offshoot of that case.
Yeah, it is interesting to see these developments because we see it, I don't want to say all the time, but we have seen it more regularly where minors, they are creating accounts on some of these dating apps or social media apps that they really shouldn't be on. They're meeting people online and getting themselves into trouble. So it is interesting to see how this case is moving forward.
One of those reasons we hear a lot of officials and experts just, you know, warning folks about the dangers of, of some of these, especially for minors and seeing some additional steps being taken for, for, you know, for younger, for younger people.
Yeah, it's definitely important. And it's also important for parents or guardians to know what your children are doing online and who they're meeting and who they're talking to. Miranda was just 16 years old and Steven Gress, he, I believe, was in his mid-30s. And she met him, they went out on Valentine's Day, and then she ended up disappearing. And of course, investigators say that she was murdered by that man as well as his domestic partner.
Heartbreaking. Our second story in the Tampa Connection today, and this is a Pasco County firefighter arrested, and it's not the first time he's faced charges?
Yes. A Pasco County firefighter was arrested for what Grady Judd says is the second time for road rage in Polk County. Now, according to arrest affidavits, a woman and her boyfriend were driving northbound on Highway 98 from Barto in Lakeland when she said she noticed an orange Dodge Charger following her extremely closely. She told investigators that she tried to change lanes so that the Dodge could pass her, but said that the driver kept following her closely and changing lanes as she did. Now, once they got to the area of Highway 98 and Combe Road, she told investigators that her boyfriend got out of the vehicle and asked the driver of the Charger, who was later identified as Deshaun Broome, if there was an issue. Then, according to the affidavit, her boyfriend got back in her car and said that Broome had a gun and pointed it at him. So that's when the couple called law enforcement. They said Broome, who does work for Pasco Fire Rescue, ended up following them into downtown Lakeland. And because they had called police, they saw him get pulled over by officers with the Lakeland Police Department. According to that affidavit, Broome told police that the occupants of the other vehicle were upset at him for either following them or cutting them off. And he said that the couple was actually following him too closely, not the other way around. But according to that affidavit, investigative resources in the area showed that Broome was the one following the couple. Now, in one of his famous morning briefings, Polk County Sheriff Grady Judd said that Broome had a clip full of ammunition in his lap and a gun in his car, and that he also made statements about trying to protect himself. And Judd said this was the second time Broome had been involved in a road rage incident. And the sheriff said that his agency let Pasco Fire Rescue know about the arrest both times. Let's hear what he had to say.
Hey, Pasco Fire, you got a guy here who can't control his emotions. He's got an issue. You putting him on a fire rescue truck? I'm just saying, you ought to think through this.
Now, Broome was charged with aggravated assault with a deadly weapon, aggravated stalking, and improper exhibit of a firearm. Garrett?
All right. And finally, Nancy, another high-profile case back in the news.
Yes, that's right. Bridgette and Christian Ziegler have filed a lawsuit against the city of Sarasota and two Sarasota police detectives claiming they overreached in a sexual assault investigation. The couple alleges an unconstitutional search of electronic devices, deceptive practices, and intentional embarrassment in police reports. Now, the investigation stemmed from a sexual assault allegation against Christian Ziegler. Records revealed that the Zieglers admitted to a prior consensual three-way relationship with the accuser, who claimed Christian Ziegler assaulted her during a one-on-one encounter back in October of 2023. Christian Ziegler acknowledged to officers that he recorded that sexual, a sexual encounter with that woman, apparently without her knowledge, but maintained the entire interaction was consensual. Now, after viewing that video, Sarasota Police concluded that that was likely the case and they did not file charges. Now, even though no criminal charges were brought about, the scandal led to intense political pressure. Governor Ron DeSantis called for Christian Ziegler to step aside, saying it was untenable for him to continue serving while under investigation. Christian Ziegler ultimately resigned from his position as Chair of the Florida Republican Party. His wife, Bridgette Ziegler, a co-founder of Moms for Liberty, did not step down from her role on the Sarasota County School Board despite calls to do so. She did, however, resign from her role with the Leadership Institute as the controversy continued to draw national attention. Now, the crux of the Ziegler's federal lawsuit revolves around an accusation that detectives withheld exculpatory evidence when they went to a judge for a search warrant of Christian Ziegler's devices. The Zieglers claim that Detective Angela Cox and Detective Maria Lovio did not mention in their affidavit the video that Christian Ziegler had shown the detectives of the alleged consensual encounter. The lawsuit says the Zieglers were deprived of due process and suffered lasting harm to their family, careers, and reputations. Now, while the lawsuit does not name a specific dollar amount, the couple is asking for compensatory damages for lost wages and legal costs and punitive damages for mental anguish, pain, and suffering, humiliation, and embarrassment. Now, the city of Sarasota has yet to file a response to this lawsuit. Garrett?
All right. And that is an old, gosh, a case that has been in the news and, and back in it again with, with new developments here of Fox 13, Senior Content Producer Nancy Gay. We appreciate you joining us today for our Tampa Connection.
Thank you.
And one other story out of the Tampa area, and it's a heartbreaking story today, where a six-year-old girl was killed, her mother and other sibling injured after they were hit by a car while they tried to cross the road on their way to school this morning. We heard a little bit from UnderSheriff Thomas St. John from the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office, talking about this case earlier today.
Today, a family's life was forever changed in the most devastating way. An unimaginable tragedy took place right here at Sheldon Road and Moore Road, where a family was crossing the road on Sheldon to go across as a mom walked her two children to school. She was safely in the crosswalk and had the signal to cross the road. The driver exiting from, or turning from Moore Road southbound on Sheldon Road, failed to realize that they were in the crosswalk where he struck them. Unfortunately, very tragic event today. We received a phone call at our communications center at 7:38 this morning advising us of the vehicle versus pedestrian crash. At 7:42, just four minutes later, our deputies were on scene. They immediately jumped into action, began rendering first aid. They notified Hillsborough County Fire Rescue that there was a possible trauma alert due to the nature of the injuries. Fire Rescue immediately responded. They continued their first aid procedures and transported our 45-year-old mom along with her 10-year-old son to St. Joseph's for further medical care. Unfortunately, her six-year-old daughter, Rosal Angela Segundo Osario, died at the scene. Our driver was a 77-year-old male. He was driving a green Dodge pickup truck. He also was transported by county fire to St. Joseph's for further medical evaluation. The driver will be cited today for a violation of right-of-way involving a death. That citation does have a $1,000 fine as well as an automatic six-month suspension of his license. You know, on behalf of Sheriff Cronister, I would be remiss if I didn't mention tragedies like these today can be avoided, because we continue to encourage our drivers to be safe. Put down your phones, stop texting, pay attention to the roads in front of you, especially at these busier times of the day, both rush hour in the morning and the afternoon, in areas where there are families crossing crosswalks, walking their children to school. It's so important that we could quite simply avoid these tragedies if we just paid attention.
Heartbreaking story out of Hillsborough County. The undersheriff, they're talking about the death of a six-year-old girl, again, hit by a car, and her mother and other sibling. They have some broken bones, we're told, but will end up being physically okay. We're going to take a break here on Florida Live, but we'll be right back after this. A live look right now in the U.S. Capitol, waiting to hear from leaders of the U.S. Senate on day 35 of the government shutdown. It is also Election Day across America. Let me give you a, a live look right now in New York City. Voters there casting their ballots for New York City Mayor in a race that is getting a lot of attention across the country.
But at the same time, having his name, you know, attached to someone is, can be meaningful, or we'll see. We'll see how not. And so, and there's a lot of different folks who've been in office before, who've been in the mayor's seat before, who are running again. It's been very contentious. It's been a story of, you know, corruption, felonies, arguments, circus-like displays at commission meetings and town halls. And so it's only going to continue for another few weeks. But it'll be interesting to see, you know, where the chips fall and what direction Miami is leaning in. You know, this is a city on the rise, but also a city that has become a lot more unaffordable. And so that's a lot of where people's heads are, where voters' heads are. You know, how can I afford to live in Miami in a place that I've lived for so long? So I'll be at different events tonight, and we'll see how it all shakes out.
That kind of segues into the question I was going to ask you, and why is this race this time so consequential for the city of Miami, you think?
Yeah, well, both because it's at this sort of, you know, crossroads, I would say, because it has grown so much. I mean, and it's become so much less affordable than it used to be. And it used to be a really kind of working-class town, you know, for a long time, I would say. People who worked in the hospitality industry could afford to live downtown. Now, those same units that were going, you know, for a low price are going for, you know, $5,000 to $7,000 for a unit, you know, to live in a high-rise. So that is making people very worried. It's also the place where, and we've talked about this before on this segment, but President Donald Trump is planning to build his post-presidential library center in downtown Miami. That's currently being held up by a judge. But it does show, you know, that Trump intends to put his roots in the area for the long term. Interestingly enough, he has not weighed in on this race. He has not endorsed, which I find a little bit surprising, given, you know, if there was a Democrat in the seat, whether that person would make it more difficult for him to build his library, just in terms of sort of stalling and things like that. But that's the situation that we're in, and it's being, yeah, it's being closely watched. It's the future of the Presidential Center, and there's a big America Business Meeting here this week, and World Cup happening, G20. So, yeah, Miami is kind of where it's hot right now.
We are also looking outside the state of Florida at the race in New York City. We talked about it a little bit ago, the mayor's race there. And we've talked a little bit about some of the implications of that potentially for us here in Florida. Why do you think folks in Florida are watching that the New York City mayor's race closely?
Yeah, well, listen, I want to start out by saying that people hate when the media acts as though New York is sort of the center of the world because it's just one place. But what was interesting was, and the reason I decided to write about it, is that so many Republicans in Florida are talking about this race. They really see a potential victory by Mondami as being a useful foil to them. They will now, you know, from assuming that Mondami wins, they will essentially try to label every Democrat as a socialist, a word that carries a lot of weight down here, negative connotations. And they will try to brand everyone as being aligned with Mondami, any Democrat, even in the Miami race, any Democrat who ends up being in the final round will probably be asked if they would support some of the same policies for the city of Miami as Mondami has supported. And so it's really going to put a lot of Democrats on the spot. Now, I should note, there are also two major candidates who are centrists running in New Jersey for governor and in Virginia for governor. And so, you know, obviously, that wouldn't be where Republicans would try to, you know, tie Democrats. They would say that everyone's going toward the left flank. But it's worth noting that actually, if Democrats do sweep tonight, and we don't know yet if they will, it wouldn't really resolve the debate within the party that says whether, you know, going toward the left or the center is the best place because it will really vary depending on where people live.
Now, let's talk about the 2026 election. I know we still have the 2025 election to go through tonight and watch the results of that. But we got the news. We know Jerry Demings, Orange County Mayor, has now officially filed, and he has an announcement rally scheduled for Thursday. So what do you make of Jerry Demings jumping in the governor's race?
Yeah, he did it kind of surreptitiously, and I had been asking for a while, you know, when's the date going to be? So I was able to break the news in Florida Playbook that he was doing this big event. And I had run it by, he's hired someone new to his campaign who is experienced covering races in Texas and in other parts of America. I had asked whether, you know, the event was happening, and they never said, oh, yeah, we also filed. So it's kind of interesting that they, like, snuck that in when we were all not really watching on Halloween. But yes, he is, this, you know, filing the paperwork makes you a candidate. He immediately jumps toward, you know, frontrunner status along with David Jolly. David Jolly's been in the race a long time. He's solidified a lot of support from other Democrats across the party. In fact, he's going to be going with Gwen Graham, who was also, you know, a candidate for governor herself a while back, will be going across the state to talk about some of the issues that Florida faces. And having, you know, her on his side should show a lot of, you know, momentum as well. But, you know, Mayor Demings is someone that people are very, you know, curious about, interested in. He carries, you know, it'll be hard, even though the Representative Byron Donalds campaign is labeling him as woke and far-left, he is not that way. His policies haven't shown that. And in fact, he hopped on the phone with me and talked about how centrist he was a while back. And so you have two centrist candidates running for the Democratic nomination for governor. It'll be competitive for both of them, I think. And, you know, I think people are very interested in seeing what his platform's going to be, what he's going to try to draw attention to in this race. And, yeah, it just makes things really competitive and interesting on the Democratic side already.
Yeah, already, and still a long way to go in that race. Speaking of still a long way to go, let's give you a live look at the U.S. Capitol. It is day 35 of the government shutdown, and still really no signs of things changing here. You also wrote in Florida Playbook about these ongoing concerns about a number of impacts in the area, and also how Democrats are kind of handling the discussions surrounding this. Kimberly?
Yeah, look, everyone's trying to get ahead of the messaging war on this. Nobody wants to be, you know, labeled as being the one to blame in this shutdown fight. As of tonight, it'll be the longest shutdown in U.S. history. Democrats want to blame Republicans. Republicans want to blame Democrats. You know, Democrats won't vote for the spending bill because it doesn't include funding for the Affordable Care Act that made subsidies, or excuse me, that made health insurance a lot more affordable for people. And it, but it made it more affordable by shifting more government funding onto private health insurance plans. So Republicans, you know, they don't like that dollar, those dollar signs going out. They don't like Obamacare. They never have. They've never voted for it. They didn't vote for the initial subsidy support. And so Democrats are really leaning in on this. In fact, we had Senator Elizabeth Warren, Tina Smith of Minnesota, and Chris Murphy of Connecticut all down here in Miami yesterday. They were calling it the epicenter of Obamacare because we have tons of people who are on these plans here in the districts in South Florida. So they wanted to, you know, really point fingers on that. And then Republicans, I would say, have been much more focused on a lot of the different food supports, especially those in Congress, you know, programs like SNAP, which used to be known as food stamps. They've drawn attention to the fact that federal workers are not getting paid. So we had Vern Buchanan put out a letter that he led with other members of the Florida delegation to urge Senate Minority Leader Chuck Schumer to reopen the government. So this, everyone is kind of flooding the zone, is the way that I put it in Florida Playbook, because they want to make sure that voters are, you know, receiving the information about the shutdown in a very specific way. But in the meantime, look, people aren't getting food benefits, people aren't getting paychecks, people are seeing very high prices on health insurance. So where will it all end? I'm not sure. I do think that lawmakers are very closely watching all of the different elections for some clues about where the voter temperature is and, you know, who they're kind of feel, you know, whether there is backlash to Trump or not.
Kimberly Leonard, Politico reporter and the author of the Florida Playbook newsletter. We appreciate you joining us this afternoon here on Florida Live.
Thanks so much.
We're going to take a break. As we do so, give you this live look again inside the halls of the Capitol, where we expect to hear from U.S. Senate leaders here shortly. Keep it right here. More to come. on day 35 of the government shutdown in Washington, D.C. Let me get you live now to Tallahassee, in the Florida State Capitol, where the Florida House Economic Infrastructure Subcommittee has been having a panel discussion talking about nuclear power. Interesting discussion. There was a presentation. There's been the time for some questions as well. Let's go ahead and listen in live for a minute as this interim Subcommittee meeting continues live in Tallahassee.
You can run things in parallel to the extent that that is possible and that you don't waste time there. So that's something that I would, you know, suggest maybe you guys would look at, see how that could be adapted to Florida. The other thing, I do think it's very important that, in particular, to the extent these SMRs are being built to serve data center or other special-purpose end-users, that, or in general, you have to make sure that, you know, regular residential ratepayers are protected. You know, we have seen instances like in Vogel or whatever we all know about, where there were big cost overruns. And so I think setting up some sort of mechanism, like what was discussed with Representative Conley or otherwise, so the end-users and contractors are able to set up, you know, some sort of recovery system that protects, you know, ordinary residents from being on the hook to the extent that there are cost overruns or other things like that. I think that is very important. So I'm happy to answer any other questions, and I just want to thank you for giving me another chance to visit Florida.
Absolutely. Yes, Representative Conley.
Thank you.
You're recognized.
Thank you for the information. You mentioned public protection or protection of the public that might be impacted by the costs associated. In many, many cases, I believe the SMRs would be off the grid essentially. There's no impact to the system. There's no investment in transmission or distribution facility. So if that is the case, what other things might be necessary to protect the public if it's not actually connected to the grid where there's not a potential benefit? I think in some cases, there might be a need for connections. It may be appropriate, but there may be many, many other incidences where it's isolated and behind the meter.
You're recognized.
Yeah, so it's a great question, and some of it may depend on whether there are changes to the regulatory environment that need to be made in order to allow that to happen. I know there's a 75, you know, megawatt limitation where if you're over that, even if you're doing, you know, your own sort of stuff, you still have to go to the PSC and other things. And there are also probably going to be cases where, this is, I think, less true for a SMR or nuclear facility because it's a 24-hour service, but a data center might want to kind of pick and choose, right? It might want to get, you know, most of its power from its onsite generation, whether that's SMR or something else, but it also might want to have the option to get power from the grid, you know, when circumstances warrant. Or, you know, even if it has, you know, let's say that's a 77-megawatt capability of generation, but they're only using six of it for the data center. What are they going to do with the other 17% or, you know, 17% or whatever? So there are, I think, you are right as a matter of principle, but I think you just got to make sure that there aren't regulatory tripwires that show up that would prevent that.
Okay. One question from Representative Escamani, then we're going to do questions to the whole panel. You're recognized.
Thank you so much. This question might be good for the whole panel too, Chair, but just talking about some of the regulations around locations, I'm curious about how that shifts with smaller reactors and just looking at a state like Florida where we have coastal communities. So there's the impact of rising sea levels, which is probably not a safe place to continue construction of these facilities, but also just how fast our growth is and development is. I feel like more and more rural areas are becoming developed. And so maybe just walk us through, like, what's the current legal landscape around locations as a change with smaller reactors and, you know, any type of other policy insights to that?
So that's, I'm sorry.
You're recognized.
I was supposed to go to you first. I'm sorry. Very good question. And because of, you know, I think the biggest thing that you're going to see with the SMR technology as opposed to the other technology is just a reduction of scale, right? It's a, you know, it's about a tenth of the size perhaps. With a light-water reactor, traditional reactor, I mean, there's really no missing that. But with a smaller scale, that's going to create fewer siting vetoes, and there are more places where you're going to be able to put them that are feasible. Similarly, with some of the safety issues, for example, with the traditional, you know, if something goes wrong with a reactor, you know, there's a, you're supposed to have an evacuation zone. I believe for a light-water reactor, it's 10 miles beyond the length of the plant. And what the NRC has said is that with SMRs, even if there were an issue, you would not need an evacuation beyond the plant's fence, you know, just because...
if you're doing, you know, your own sort of stuff, you still have to go to the PSC and other things. And there are also probably going to be cases where, this is, I think, less true for a SMR nuclear facility because it's a 24-hour service, but a data center might want to kind of pick and choose, right? It might want to get, you know, most of its power from its onsite generation, whether that's SMR or something else, but it also might want to have the option to get power from the grid, you know, when circumstances warrant. Or, you know, even if it has, you know, let's say that's a 77-megawatt capability of generation, but they're only using six of it for the data center. What are they going to do with the other 17% or, you know, 17% or whatever? So there are, I think, you are right as a matter of principle, but I think you just got to make sure that there aren't regulatory tripwires that show up that would prevent that.
Okay. One question from Representative Eskamani, then we're going to do questions to the whole panel. You're recognized.
Thank you so much. This question might be good for the whole panel too, Chair, but just talking about some of the regulations around locations, I'm curious about how that shifts with smaller reactors and just looking at a state like Florida where we have coastal communities. So there's the impact of rising sea levels, which is probably not a safe place to continue construction of these facilities, but also just how fast our growth is and development is. I feel like more and more rural areas are becoming developed. And so maybe just walk us through, like, what's the current legal landscape around locations as a change with smaller reactors and, you know, any type of other policy insights to that?
So that's, I'm sorry.
You're recognized.
Supposed to go to you first, I'm sorry. Very good question. And because of, you know, I think the biggest thing that you're going to see with the SMR technology as opposed to the other technology is just a reduction of scale, right? It's a, you know, it's about a tenth of the size perhaps. With a light water reactor, traditional reactor, I mean, there's really no missing that. But with a smaller scale, that's going to create fewer siting vetoes and there are more places where you're going to be able to put them that are feasible. Similarly, with some of the safety issues, for example, with the traditional, you know, if something goes wrong with the reactor, you know, there's a, you're supposed to have an evacuation zone. I believe for a light water reactor, it's 10 miles beyond the length of the plant. And what the NRC has said is that with SMRs, even if there were an issue, you would not need an evacuation beyond the plant's fence, you know, just because of the reduced risk there. So that there's a lot of issues like that where I think it's going to be more feasible to site reactors in more places because of that. I mean, water, again, you know, a lot of the water accountings are done on a per, you know, how many gallons to produce a megawatt thing. But if you're in an area where, if you're in a SMR and you need 50 gigawatts, even if that was, you know, they do use less water on a, to produce a megawatt hour of electricity, but even if it was the same, if you're only, if you only need to draw 50, that's going to be feasible in more places than if you needed 800, you know, or 1,200 gigawatts, megawatts.
Ongoing discussion there in Tallahassee where lawmakers getting the chance to ask some questions. The members of the panel there, that last question we heard asked from State Representative Anna Eskamani, a Democrat from Orlando, who was speaking. We heard from a number of different experts today, part of this panel, this interim committee meeting continuing in Tallahassee, one of several committee meetings going on this week in the interim before the legislative session begins. So a lot of activity on, in Tallahassee at the State Capitol and also a lot of activity on Capitol Hill where you see reporters waiting on Senate Republican leaders to arrive to hold their news conference this afternoon about the ongoing government shutdown following a failed, a 14th failed test vote on funding the government to end that government shutdown. Well, we are going to take a break here on Florida Live, but we still have more to come. So keep it right here on Fox Local, YouTube, and on Fox 35 TV, and we will be right back. Welcome back into Florida Live. Garrett Weimer here. And change of plans because we have Senator John Thune, the Senate Majority Leader, who walked up to the podium just a couple of minutes ago and is speaking to reporters now as we near the longest ever government shutdown, getting ready to set a record on this, day 35. Senate Majority Leader Thune saying that they still don't know exactly what Democrats want because he believes they have offered them negotiations and other things like that. But as this shutdown continues, we continue to see impacts locally. We have talked about that quite a bit over this past hour and over the past few hours here on Fox Local. So let's go ahead and listen in as Senate Majority Leader John Thune speaks live right now on Capitol Hill.
... reopen and all these adverse consequences that are being experienced by people across this country will go away. That's all it takes. Five more Democrats, five Democrat senators with the courage to take on their political base and their leaders and to do what's in the best interest of the American people.
Majority Leader, walk us through the play call here, the potential play call, the idea that there might be some sort of agreement to move the CR to a later date in January, vote Thursday night, Friday night, something like that. And is there a disagreement between the date between the Senate and the House?
Well, there, I think, obviously, since we are now into November and the CR, we've lost five weeks, so the November 21 deadline no longer makes a lot of sense. So clearly it would have to be extended and there is a conversation around what that next deadline would be. But the hope and expectation would be that we could get appropriations bills on the floor, get them considered and passed so that we can fund the government through the normal appropriations process. Nobody wants a year-long continuing resolution, least of all the Defense Department, and the best way to avoid that is to move appropriations bills. The date is still something that's being, I would say, being discussed.
And is that because there's an issue in the Senate or there's disagreement between the Republican?
Well, obviously.
And the Republican leadership in the House?
It's a function of, it's Republicans and Democrats in the House and Senate. I mean, obviously, you've got to have the votes to execute on whatever it is we put on the floor. And so, you know, we want to make sure that we do that in a way that enables us to have success. And if we have to change the date, which we will here in the Senate to send something back to the House, we obviously want something that will pass the House and will be signed into law by the President.
Given all the suffering in the country right now, given the fact that you've held these press conferences every week and the speakers held them daily, why is it, do you think, that public opinion is not carried in a day on this issue?
You know, I don't know. And honestly, I've said this before, I just, I really, I really try to avoid making this an issue out of what the polls say or who's winning or losing because nobody wins. Shutdowns are stupid. I've been here long enough to have been through a few of them, nobody wins. And so, you know, I think the, obviously, the American people ought to hold us all accountable. But clearly, in this case, it is the Democrats and they are actually coming out and owning it in their public statements, suggesting that we want to keep the shutdown going or it gets better every day for us or we need this for leverage. Those are all statements being made by Democrat senators and House members. And I think that's the prism through which they're viewing this. And I think that's just the wrong way to look at this. The right way to look at this is, as you pointed out, the impact that it's having on the American people and the pain that it's inflicting on literally millions of Americans. That's what, that's what I think this is about. And honestly, nobody wins. Let's just, they need to vote, let's open up the government and get back to work.
Tucker Carlson had a friendly interview with the point tense about Hitler, Stalin, apologist. This is pattern of behavior for Carlson, who's, you know, expressed pretty sympathetic views toward controversial figures like Vladimir Putin, for example. Do you think that Tucker Carlson's views and that his voice belong in the conservative movement?
Well, there are lots of voices, obviously, out there and, but I don't think there ought to be any, there just should be no room at all whatsoever for antisemitism or other forms of discrimination. And that's certainly not what our party is about. Our party is a party that welcomes all comers and we want to stand up for and on behalf of the American people who work hard every day to make a living and just want a government that works for them, hopefully at the lowest possible cost and in a way that enables them to go about their lives and provide for them and their families. Thank you.
House Republican Leadership wrapping up that news conference. That was Senate Majority Leader John Thune, a Republican from South Dakota, talking there about the government shutdown and also asked a couple of other questions as well. It is a day 35 of the government shutdown. We know that that is putting a strain on a lot of families out there. As we talked about earlier in the show, there are some resources available and if you are in a position where you can help, we know food banks, food pantries and other charities and organizations in the area certainly could, could use your help to lend that helping hand to other families who need some help, maybe not receiving a paycheck because they work for the federal government, maybe not receiving SNAP benefits while that's suspended, whatever the case may be. We are out of time here on Florida Live, but we appreciate you joining us today. As we wrap up, let me give you a live look at Daytona Beach from our Hard Rock Hotel camera. Have a great evening.
Hello, everybody. Meteorologist Noah Bourbon here. It is just after 3 o'clock on a Tuesday, Tuesday, November 4, 2025, and Election Day, Tuesday. Hope you're having a great day out there so far. We've got lots to discuss, including the tropics, cooler weather, warmer weather, and an outlook heading into Thanksgiving. So appreciate you watching here on Facebook, YouTube, Fox Local. We've got much to go over and I look forward to hearing some of your questions, comments, concerns on Facebook, YouTube, and you can watch, don't forget, as always, on Fox Local. Just give me one second because I'm having a little bit of a problem getting my graphics in here. Try this again here. And what we're watching for the week ahead is really the first major cold front of the year coming in next week. And that's going to be about a week from now. So one week from now, we're going to have probably the biggest cold front of the year so far in Florida, easily. All right, so there we go. Now we should be cooking. All right, let's talk about the radar out there right now, see if we get this to low day. There we go. Okay, so here's the live radar right now. 2 o'clock, things are good. 3 o'clock, things are good. You can see the radar out there right now. Not having any rain out there, which is good news. And not expecting any rain for today or tomorrow. We do need some rain in some spots. Temperatures today so far have gotten into the 70s and 80s, 77 in Orlando, 78 in Sanford, 80 in Winter Haven, 80 in Cocoa Beach. Things are looking very nice. And there's the view from Ocala out there, out there for today. Not a cloud in the sky and it's going to stay mostly clear in Ocala through the evening, but there's some more clouds down by Orlando. So here's the temperatures tonight. Let me take these full screen so you can see the graphics here. So let me get you back here. So here's the Fox model this afternoon. Notice things are really nice. And as we go forward, we're going to have some clouds that try to come in from the south. This is Thursday. Notice we get a little bit of an increase in the cloud cover from the south Thursday. We get like a veil of clouds up to about Seminole County and then up in the Panhandle, it's still sunny. And then down in central, south Florida, it's kind of cloudy for Thursday. So a few more clouds Thursday, maybe a shower. I think the best chance for showers Thursday is going to stay down in south Florida, south and southwest Florida. I don't really think there'll be much here. The notice in the Panhandle. The notice in the Panhandle, it's totally sunny for Thursday afternoon and Thursday evening. And then as we go into Friday, the front moves by and notice the direction of the flow here. Things start to move from south to north. We get a southerly push of air in here. And that'll really warm us up heading into Friday, but then again on Saturday. I think temperatures on Saturday could push into the high eighties. Maybe in some places within shouting distance of 90 before these cold fronts come through. Now let me turn these off. So this is the time of the year, we start looking at the national map a lot more for Florida. We'll have this front come through, then this front here, this one is going to come through Florida next Monday. And this, when it gets to here, is going to have a major drop in the temperature weather going into about a week out from now. So let me look at the radar. Let's take you a little radar tour now. And you can notice that we do have some of the rain down to our south. So here is the rain. Okay. We do have some rain down by Cuba and in the Southern Gulf. And you can see some of that rain down here, right there. And that rain is going to maybe move like this over the next two days. So it's not going to really come towards Florida. So it's really, really, really nice out there right now. But this is an interesting one right here. I'm going to show you the satellite here coming up in a second. But got a comment here from YouTube, from Joel Clearmont, who's one of our avid weather followers and watchers here. Give me one second. Okay, that may have froze on me. Give me one second, Joel, we'll get your comment back up here. So Joel in Clearmont. 75 and very cloudy. About right. 77 Cocoa Beach, 76 in the villages. Here's the temperatures across the country right now. And notice 79, it feels like Miami. You don't really see the cold yet. The cold is still well, 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 well to the north, up here in Billings and in Bismarck. But that cold is going to be coming in big time for next week. All right. So let's talk about Saturday, shall we? So here's Saturday's temperatures. We're talking about maybe 87 to 90 inland. Very, very, very warm. Now here is the feels like forecast. Get the banner back on here. I don't know why that went away. Here's the, here's the feels like for next Tuesday. Take a look at this. So watch this. This is a week from now. Well, this is next Monday, but this is the long range. This is just the raw model. This is the feels like. Yeah, look at that. That's our first major, major cold of the year coming in a week from now. These are the feels like readings. The actual temps probably add about five degrees to these. So we're talking about maybe low 40s in Orlando, maybe about 40 in the villages. There could be some frost up in North Florida next week. But yeah, we got a monstrous change here between this for Saturday and this coming in for next Monday night into Tuesday, which wow, that's going to be a big shock to the system indeed. So let me know where you're watching from. If you have a question, comment, a concern about the weather. Hope to see some of your comments and questions in here. I hope everybody's having a great day out there today. On this 4th of November, 2025, can you believe Thanksgiving is ready around the corner? Yeah, things are, things are looking good. So let me pull up some of your comments here. Let's see some of your comments. Sunny and beautiful in Live Oak. Kathleen, Kathleen Sullivan, appreciate you there Kathleen. Appreciate that comment there. So let's take a look at the, the national outlook here. Let's get into some more. I promised you more on the tropics and the cold air coming for next week. So let's talk about that. So here is the long range tropical outlook. This comes to us from our friends at. This comes to us from our friends at the Weather Center. And let me pull this up on the models. We'll take a look. So there's a chance one more time if we get some tropical development in the Caribbean, probably next week, and then once again the week after. It doesn't look like, at least now, if anything forms, that it would be a threat to Florida, which is really good news because of these cold fronts. But obviously we'll always keep watch and see what happens with anything in the tropics. So let's, let's dive into some of the models here. So first, bring you full screen here. So this is, let me bring up the, bring up the feels like readings here. So this, you'll see this is going into the weekend. So here's that front. This is next Monday. Let me bring this to the east. Bring it into the southeast. So here's the temperatures next week. We'll, we'll look at this in the moisture chart quick. You'll clearly see the front. Here's this front coming in, just going to squash its way south, going into Sunday, Monday and super dry air. I mean, this is like chapstick level air for next Tuesday with bluebird skies. And that'll stay with us for probably a while through the end of next week. But look at some of these feels like readings. This is next Tuesday. We're talking about twenties as far south as the Florida Panhandle, low thirties into Tampa. Some of these temperatures, I believe this would be record setting chill. And here's the actual air temp from the Euro model. 40 in Orlando, 37 in the villages. And here's the feels like readings. Yeah, look at that. That's really, really chilly. 33 Orlando, 32 in Clearmont. Yes. So let's take a look quick. I'll look for you off camera while we take a look at that. So these are the, the temperature forecasts. That's the feels, the temperature air temp for next week. This is next Tuesday morning and 40 on the morning of the 11th. We'll see whether that morning low ranks. I'm going to look this up quick for you. Hope everybody's having a great day on this Tuesday so far. Let's see, November 11th. Let's see. So Orlando, the record low in Orlando is 39 from 1894 in 1932. So this would be potentially record cold. Look at that. Yeah. So since 1893, a lot of years, the record low for next Tuesday is 39 and that's what the Euro is forecasting. So that would be a record cold air for how early in the winter it is.